Good afternoon and welcome to the Orange County Public School Board meeting. I want to take just a moment to recognize before our moment of silence, I want to call on both Member Johanna Lopez and then Vice Chair Kat Gordon to reflect on some members of our family here in Orange County Public Schools that are no longer with us today. Ms. Lopez.
I ask that you remember Teachers Gina Minchi of Lake Nona Mido and Adrienne Brown of Foresight Woods Elementary and their families in your talks and prayers due to their recent passing.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. Also, we are asking you to save the date for a celebration of life. I lost my mayor of Edgewood and he was very instrumental in helping us. Edgewood is one of the only municipalities that does not have a school, an OCPS school. There is a charter school there, but the Honorable Mayor Ray Bagshaw was very instrumental in trying to get the community to look at putting a school within that community that would serve that community of Edgewood and which we all share a part of. So they are asking the community, they will be honoring him April the 16th through March the 10th and then also Friday, Friday the 19th, thank you Karen, from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Bradshaw Park at Edgewood City Hall. They are asking all of you to please come and partake of that. This is the food truck that had been serving our community within that area. They are going to name it in honor of Mayor Ray Bagshaw and they are asking us to come. Also, the family is asking that Dr. Fine is an Edgewood resident and a veterinarian, actively working to control our community cats population. And if you know Mayor Ray Bagshaw, he was very fond of cats. So it's called Cats in Need. And if you need more information, if you call City Hall, they are passing these out throughout the community along with the Forget Me Not Seeds in memory of the mayor. So they would love for you to stop by City Hall and write condolences to the family. That is a beautiful thing that they are doing. So that is Friday, April 19th, 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock at the Bagshaw Park and it's at Edgewood City Hall. We lost our mayor and we're sad about it, but Mayor Theresa Jacobs had given condolences on that, but they wanted additional information shared.
Absolutely.
So they wanted to thank you for that.
Absolutely. I think any of us that are able to attend that know him, I can tell you, his wife, it will mean a great deal to her. As you all know, that's largely why we attend these vigils and funerals. It's for the remaining family members and how important it is for them to know that we remember, we reflect and when we honor those who we've lost. With that, let me call on Member Bird.
All right, I'm gonna, Bird is, no, Bird is first. You can, I'll end, I'll end, I'll end it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I want to just take a moment to acknowledge a very special gentleman that we lost in our community in Apopka, Mr. Ernest White. He was an assistant principal at, there's a picture of him, the gymnasium at Apopka Memorial Middle School is named after him. He was assistant principal there and was he just, he was an assistant principal and a coach, right? I'm asking you, you're going through all that.
Yeah, I'm gonna read it for you.
Okay. I just want, I did not personally know him, but I, you know, spoke to some people about him and I did a little reading online of comments that people made about him and he apparently, from what I could tell, was the kind of educator that comes along every now and then that just reaches down deep inside kids' lives and changes their lives. Many of the kids said that they kept, he kept them on the straighten air. He was tough. He was really tough on them, but that he loved them and they knew it and he really changed their lives. So I can tell, from what I can tell, Mr. White will be missed by very many people in the Apopka community and, but his, the impression that he left will be remembered for years to come.
Thank you Board, Member Bird. I thank you so much for that. Thank you Chair Jacobs for that. The family is here. I would like the family to please stand that we may honor you for the life of your loved one, Mr. Ernest White. Will the family please stand? Mrs. Rutha White, top educator, retired educator, retired in Orange County. If I go on and on, everybody in the family, will you stand? All are educators. They are graduates of Orange County Public Schools. They are educators of Orange Public Schools. They have graduated from historical black colleges, Morehouse, BCC. I think I can go on and on, but I would like for you to remain standing. We honor Mr. Ernest White. I had the opportunity of meeting you all 52 years ago and you welcomed me in as an educator and not only that, you trained me and you allow me to teach and work with your children through Jones High, through Orange Center, through the elementary schools in the community and you were always there. You have really been a pillar in the community and so have your dad, your husband, your uncle, your brother, your cousin. He has really been a person. You could see why the gymnasium was named after him and it was an honor to see his name go up so huge in Apopka area during a very tumultuous time. He was sent there at a very rough time. I was sent to Dream Lake Elementary at a very rough time, which is a school right across the street, but we all became very close and, and we all love each other and we are still good friends today and we have not broken that tie. So the Board wanted to salute Mr. Ernest White and we wanted your family to know how much we appreciate him like we appreciate anyone else that have passed on and has given a lot to the children of Orange County and not just Orange County because as we read on, we found out how active he was in his religious life and that he had been appointed to national posts and served on that and always working with children and young people and youth. So you should be proud of your dad, Ernest. You're named after your dad. You should be very, very proud of him. He loved you. You're a Morehouse man. He made you everything that he could make you to be along with your brothers and your family. So I will read the resolution coming from the School Board of Orange County. Whereas Ernest White was a vessel in God's infinite master plan for Orange County Public Schools for more than 30 years. And whereas after being reared in Volusia County and serving in the United States Army, he attended Bethune Goodman College, earning his bachelor's degree in physical education in the year of 1958. Whereas he, he used this degree to find employment, none other than with Orange County Public School in 1962, later transforming the young minds and bodies of students at Jones High School, Wheatley, Apopka Junior High and Apopka Middle Schools. And whereas to continue his personal quest for knowledge and support the educational advancement of children in 1977, he earned his master's degree in administration and supervision from Florida Technological University, now known as the University of Central Florida. And whereas during his OCPS career, in addition to being a physical education teacher, he also coached football, he coached basketball and served as administrative dean and later a dynamic assistant principal before retiring in the year of 1995 from Apopka Middle School, which named its mighty gymnasium after him. And whereas he, along with his wife, Rutha White, a top educator in Orange County and retired, was an active member in the School Board District Community of School Board District 5, mentoring and molding local youth in music, education and so many other educational endeavors. Whereas as a husband, a father and a man after God's own heart, who diligently sought God's will for his life and family, he was a faithful member and a trustee and a deacon at the mighty Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Institutional Church. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Orange County thus hereby acknowledge and declare that Ernest White will remain a much-loved employee and resident of the Orange County Public Schools and School Board District 5, who touched many lives and left the legacy of love and faithfulness that will continue for generations to come. To Ernest White's family, this School Board loves your dad, your husband, your brother, your uncle and your family member. May God bless you all.
Thank you Vice Chair. And now I'm going to ask if we can all rise for a moment of silence and I know I speak for the Board members here when I say we will be honoring and reflecting on those we lost and the family members impacted by their loss. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll join me. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have several recognitions to celebrate tonight, but before we begin that, I've been told by Member Gould that we have some very important, very special members of the audience here with us today. All of you all are special in your own way, but, oh, I think I see them, there they are. I understand we have a Boy Scout troop joining us today. Why don't you all rise so we can, thank you for being here. Thank you all. I imagine this is part of earning a badge, a citizenship badge of some sort and we appreciate very much. We know that Boy Scouts teach you so much, but the citizenship part is so very important to the foundation of our country and the future of our country. So thank you for being here and don't ever forget that part of that means giving us your thoughts along the ways and giving us some advice. So email is cheap and it's easy and we all have email addresses. So along the way, if you think you have some ideas for things we can be doing better, we'd like to hear from you. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on then to our special recognitions. Tonight we have one recognition of partners in education and with us, to recognize them for their talent are, who do we have with us to recognize our students in partners in education? Let me move on to Bike Walk Central Florida, also known as Operation Best Foot Forward. And I know we have Erin Norman who's joining us. Erin, how are you?
Hello, my name's Erin.
Hey Erin, how are you?
Good. Okay, so I'm here from the Walk Safe Bike Safe Program. The Walk Safe Program, a part of Kids Neuroscience Center at the University of Miami, was developed to improve pedestrian safety and health for elementary school children on a statewide level. The curriculum is designed to teach students safe walking skills and is taught to coincide with the annual Walk to School Day events during the month of October. As a part of the curriculum, students are encouraged to create posters to promote key pedestrian safety lessons from what they've learned. This year we had entries from Miami Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, Orange and Polk Counties. So we're here today to recognize three of the winners for Orange County. All of our winners are from Lake Sibelia Elementary. So I'm going to call your names up for grades K through 1. We have Angel Melton as our winner. So if anybody can give him a round of applause. Okay, and for second and third grade, we have Yael Baez. And then fourth and fifth grade, we have Sophia Leach.
Let Dad get a picture.
That's okay. We're gonna bring, we're gonna bring you all back up here because we want to get a picture with all three of you.
All three of these students had exemplary work. They're super talented and thank you guys for having us here and a special thanks to Bike Walk Central Florida for their continued support of the Walk Safe Program.
No, thank you and thank you for all that you do to help us figure out how best to keep our children safe. So if I could ask if you would come forward and if we can bring our students up and the entire team with Walk Safe, I gotta get used to that because it's that new name, I gotta get used to that, Walk Safe, bring the kids up so we can all thank them and I think we have a certificate to present to them. And dads or moms, you can take a picture with your kids up here. Come stand right here. Allegiance, woo!
Yeah, you better. Every now and then, the school, the person.
All right, tonight we also want to recognize a wonderful organization which provided dental services at no cost to families over spring break. And joining us tonight to share the details and to introduce Florida Dental Association Mission of Mercy is our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Kathy Schuler. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening Chair Jacobs, School Board Members and Superintendent Jenkins. An author once said, "Nothing you wear is more important than a smile." A year ago, members of the Florida Dental Association Mission of Mercy contacted OCPS about hosting an event to help assist the underserved and uninsured or those who otherwise go without dental health care. Now, more than 1,800 individuals, including 200 veterans are now smiling because they were able to receive free oral health care by hundreds of dentists, dental hygienists, dental assistants and more than 1,400 community members, partners and volunteers at Edgewater High School. This occurred March 21st through the 23rd. Therefore, we would like to proudly recognize the Florida Dental Association Mission of Mercy. And here with us today are the co-chairs, Dr. Jim Anton, Dr. Don Elka and family. At this time, Dr. Elka would like to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Elka, welcome. And thank you.
Actually, the few words I'd like to say are just thank you. October of 2017, we had a phone call with, with Dr. Jenkins, with Dr. Williams and Dr. Vicki Cartwright. We'd been having some problems finding a location to hold our Mission of Mercy and the School Board was, or the administration was all, all on it. They were all excited at the fact that we would consider bringing it to Orlando and to the Edgewater or one of the other high schools. I do need to take a minute to kind of explain the Mission of Mercy. It is a 106-chair dental clinic. It had, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, about 1,400 other volunteers that provided care at no cost to the residents and the people of the community of Orlando. It kind of started with that conversation on the telephone in 2017 and the administration asked Dr. Ian Gesintheit to be our kind of contact with them. He kind of percolated that down to Tammy Miller, who is the facilities coordinator at Edgewater High School. And quite frankly, Tammy is a genius. She had all the questions, the answers to the questions that Dr. Anton and I had. In fact, she had all the answers to the questions that we were not smart enough to ask. And I must say one other thing, whoever hired her was a genius. But Dr. Anton and I experienced the staff at Edgewater in a rather unique way. We would start our day at 3:30 in the morning and our site people would be there with us. Ishmael Rodriguez, Michelle Kaiser and Nancy, Valerie Lopez, I'm sorry, I mispronounced that, were there with us. And I've never known a person who could be in more than one place at one time, but each of those three individuals, I'm convinced, could be in two or three places at one time. They were phenomenal. And I think the School Board needs to be very proud of the, of the staff and the support that we got from the facilities. But last but not least, I need to talk about the kitchen, the regional kitchen manager, Carlos Aviles. Phenomenal. He helped our hospitality crews serve over 6,500 catered meals in two and a half days. His staff and his team, Ada and Angie were really great. They did the job, they stepped up. We could not have pulled off this Florida Mission of Mercy without the help of the Orange County Public Schools and we do appreciate the acknowledgement, but truthfully, we didn't do it for that. The Florida Dental Association Foundation is the heart of the Florida Dental Association and we did it because it needed to be done. And we want to thank you for your support and next year it's in Jacksonville.
And we want to thank you for your heart. And if you would bring your team up, we want to thank you for your heart. If you want to bring your team up, we want to just personally thank you. And there are certificates of appreciation. She didn't do it for that either, but we're thankful that you cared enough to do it. And we have one on the floor. Tonight, we're also recognizing Evans and Jones High School for earning a national recognition from the College Board. And to tell us a little bit more about that award, we're going to introduce our guests from both schools, we have Dr. Harold Border. Dr. Border, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Jacobs, Honorable Members of Board, Superintendent Jenkins and staff. Very excited to be with you for two special recognitions for Jones and Evans High School tonight. Providing female students with access to computer science courses contributes to gender parity in the industry's high-paying jobs and drives innovation, creativity and competition. College Board's AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award recognizes schools that are closing the gender gap and engaging more female students in computer science coursework in AP Computer Science Principles and AP Computer Science A. Specifically, College Board is honoring schools who reached 50% or higher female representation in either of the two AP Computer Science courses in 2018 or whose percentage of the female examiners met or exceeded that of the school's female population. Out of more than 18,000 secondary schools worldwide that offer these AP courses, only 685 achieved this important result. We're excited to share with you that two of these schools reside here in Orange County Public Schools. Jones High School has earned the College Board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award for achieving high female representation in AP Computer Science Principles. And Evans High School is one of only 28 schools globally that has earned the College Board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award for achieving high female representation in both AP Computer Science A and AP Computer Science Principles. We're pleased to have with us tonight from the College Board our Director of State Programs and Assistant Director of State Partnerships, Tikiña Thompson and Sasha Williams. Also from representing Jones High School, the great Jones High School is our principal, Ms. Allison Kirby. Our Computer Science Principles Teacher, Mr. Robertson. And we also have ninth-grade female student Shawna Federic with us, who is off to a great start her freshman year with a 3.62 weighted GPA and is aspiring a future career in computer science. Evans High School is represented by Assistant Principal of Instruction, Ms. Heather Kreider. Our AP Computer Science Teacher and AP Computer Science Principles Teacher, Dr. Jamila Mitchell. And our AP, as well as our other rigorous test coordinators, Coordinator at Evans High School, Mr. David Bararty. We appreciate you having us tonight. We applaud Evans and Jones High School for their leadership in providing access to their female students for these most rigorous high school computer science courses. They'll certainly serve as an inspiration for others and we're showcasing green tonight. Go Trojans and go Tigers.
Dr. Border, if you would bring the team and any students that you have with you, if you bring them up, we'd like to congratulate all of them on their incredible accomplishment.
Our pleasure, thank you. Good to see you.
All right, we have, we have two more recognitions before we begin our meeting. I don't know about anybody else, but I think I could spend the whole night on these recognitions. Actually, the proclamations. I want to call on first our Chief of Police, Brian Holmes. And Chief Holmes is going to talk to us about the significance of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Orange County Public Schools. And then we have a proclamation on behalf of the Board. Chief Holmes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Board and Superintendent Jenkins. I'm Brian Holmes, I am the Chief of the District Police and tonight I am pleased to say a few words about our District Police Communication Center. This year, the District Police would like to recognize our Communication Center during the 2019 National Telecommunicators Week. Our first dispatcher started in January of 2017 and the months later, we filled the remaining of our positions. During the past
telecommunicators that are employed by Orange County Public Schools in the District Police Communication Center. And whereas, Orange County Public Schools' professional public safety telecommunicators serve during district and state emergencies to ensure continuity of operations and continued communication in and with partner agencies. And whereas, we wish to recognize Orange County Public Schools' public police safety telecommunicators for their continued hard work and dedication. Now therefore be it resolved that Orange County Public Schools does hereby proclaim April 14 through the 20th as National Public Safety Telecommunication Week here in Orange County. Congratulations, thank you for being a part of our critical safety network.
Bring them up for a picture.
Absolutely. Come on, team.
You too, Christina. I know you don't like the picture.
Thank you to your entire team. And next, we want to recognize Denim Day. And I heard one of my colleagues over here chuckling, and I think, you know, in just a minute, you're going to understand just how significant this is. I want to call on Louis Damiani. Louis Damiani is the CEO of the Victim Service Center of Central Florida. For those who may not know, April is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month nationally. And Mr. Damiani has made it his mission to make sure that citizens all across Central Florida are aware not only of this month, but of the significance of Denim Day. He can do a much better job of explaining it, so I'm going to call on him in just a minute. But he worked for, as an aide initially, for Mary Johnson, who some of you may remember. Yes, and Mary Johnson, this was a passion. Yes, remember her? Yes. And Mary Johnson was, it was her initiative to create the Victim Service Center. And Louis then became a Commissioner. I had the wonderful privilege of getting to serve with him for a couple of years. And he is now the CEO of the Victim Service Center, which, of course, as you can imagine, has been incredibly important to this community, but especially during Pulse, incredibly valuable to this community day in and day out in ways that most of us will never see. But he reached out to me because he's on a mission to not just make sure that cities and counties recognize it, but that it's the school districts. And I think we're going to be the first school district in Central Florida, and we won't be the last, because everybody will follow suit in recognizing how important it is for us to get that message out and for us to help our kids understand, not just our teachers, but our kids understand where's that precious line in relationships. So with that, Mr. Damiani, you recognize her.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair, Honorable School Board Members, Superintendent Jenkins, for allowing me just a few minutes to be here to talk about the important work we do and to, you know, encourage community-wide participation this year in Denim Day, which comes up here on the 24th. At the Victim Service Center, we help and heal victims of violent crime, sexual assault, and any other kind of traumatic circumstance. We do this through 24/7 crisis intervention, we do victim support, and we also provide therapy and some prevention education, which is why I'm here to talk tonight. We are the only rape crisis center serving Central Florida. More than once a day, our master's-level team of crisis counselors and specially-trained nurse examiners respond to a sexual assault victim -- Thank you, by the way. -- respond to a sexual assault victim in crisis. We did that 383 times last year alone, more than once a day. Plus, and get your mind around this, we helped more than 6,000 other victims of violence and other trauma, including those that were sexually abused as children. And our services are always free to the community. Every April, as you mentioned, is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we champion what is called Denim Day, always on the last Wednesday in April. We do this to help spread awareness about the physical and emotional trauma that accompanies sexual assault and to show support for survivors in our community. Participation in Denim Day, super easy. It's free and it's open to all that want to participate, whether it's schools, government agencies, businesses, or individual citizens. All you got to do is wear denim on April 24th and then share with others why you're wearing denim. And I'm going to show you a video here in a minute that's going to sort of explain some of that. The simple act can simply change how people think and talk about sexual assault and harassment, and that's what we want to do, is generate a conversation. Registration's super easy, just go to our website, it's victim servicecenter.org. If you start typing the word victim, we are the number one Google search, we'll pop straight to the top. You'll find a Denim Day page there, you can sign up, either do it individually, sign up a team, however you want to do it. And again, it's totally free. Then you'll also be introduced to a 90-second video, and I'm going to show you that, it's right there on the front, right in the middle of the screen, and you can click on that, and 90 seconds, it tells you what it is and why people should support it. Participants can also, from there, hopefully, actually, right there on the corner of the desk, there's some posters, and I left some materials, I can see them right there. So you can print your own -- there you go. You can print your own posters right off of the website. It's totally driven by the individuals. And if you engage now, we even send you little decals that you can wear that day, if we can get them to you before the 24th. And again, help to generate the conversation. All we ask in return is that you simply snap a picture of you and your colleagues on that day, wearing your jeans, and then post it to social media, hashtag Denim Day, and then tag us at BSC Florida. Super easy. I can tell you, it spread like wildfire last year. We have participants all over the state of Florida. And actually, this year, we have every county commissioner, Seminole, Orange, Osceola, City of Orlando, Kissimmee, just about every city and town. And as you mentioned, for the first time ever, the school board joining us in proclaiming Denim Day. So, you know, you're going to see everybody on the 24th wearing jeans around town and hopefully having that conversation. By simply wearing jeans on Denim Day, we draw attention to the destructive misconceptions surrounding sexual assault, and we show support for assault survivors in our community. And if you, I can indulge you for just another quick moment.
Absolutely, please.
I'm going to show you what the video looks like.
Do you wear jeans for Denim Day? Do you wear jeans for Denim Day?
Do you wear jeans for Denim Day?
I wear jeans for Denim Day.
I wear jeans for Denim Day, too. And here's why.
In Italy in the 1990s, a young woman was sexually assaulted by her driving instructor.
He was arrested and convicted.
But the case was overturned.
Overturned because the justices felt that since the young woman was wearing tight jeans...
She must have helped her attacker get them off.
Implying consent.
He was set free.
He was set free.
He was set free.
Outraged by the verdict, women in the Italian Parliament protested by wearing jeans to work in solidarity with the victim, and Denim Day was born.
Join the Victim Service Center of Central Florida and take a stand.
Make a statement.
Make a fashion statement.
Against the destructive misconceptions that surround sexual assault.
Show your support for survivors of sexual violence in our community.
For our sisters.
Our daughters.
Our mothers.
Our loved ones.
For survivors everywhere.
Wear jeans this Denim Day.
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 To join the Denim Day movement, visit victim servicecenter.org.
Pretty simple.
Thank you, Louis. Well, let me end with a proclamation from the Board. Whereas, the month of April is National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, calling attention to the fact that sexual assault and harassment is widespread and harms our community. And whereas, every two minutes, someone in America is sexually assaulted, and about 75% of harassment victims experience retaliation when they report it. And whereas, the Denim Day movement is a worldwide effort that started as a grassroots protest against a controversial Italian Supreme Court decision in which a sexual assault conviction was overturned because the victim was wearing tight jeans at the time of the attack. And whereas, Denim Day encourages everyone to stand in solidarity with survivors of sexual violence and to speak up when they hear comments that blame victims or make light of sexual harassment and assault. And whereas, together, we can change how we think and talk about this issue, we can create a culture of respect, equality, and safety for our citizens. And with proper education on the matter and comprehensive prevention projects, sexual violence and its unfair traumatizing effects are preventable. And whereas, Orange County Public Schools strongly supports the Victim Service Center of Central Florida and their efforts to heal victims, educate and train the community, and stop sexual violence before it starts. Now therefore be it resolved that Orange County Public Schools does hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 24, 2019, as Denim Day. And I would suggest that we urge all Board members, I believe we have a meeting the day before, if I'm not mistaken, that we all join in solidarity and we wear jeans to the Board meeting. So with that...
Take a picture.
We will take a picture. We will take a picture. All right. Mr. Damiani, if you'll come forward, we just want to thank you for being here and bringing this to our attention. And the great work you're doing, Louis. Member Lopez, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you. No, I just want to clarify. I just want to clarify that we are working on the resolutions for Ms. Brown and Ms. Cheney.
Yes.
So just to make sure that everybody understands that that recently happened on Sunday and last week, you know, the last days of last week.
Yes.
So we are waiting for Ms. Cheney families and also still waiting for more information in reference to Ms. Brown as well.
Oh, thank you so much for pointing that out. No, I know that, and of course, the Board does, but the family doesn't necessarily realize that. So thank you for highlighting that. It's extremely important to us to have those resolutions in the hands of the families as quick as possible. Thank you. All right. We are now going to move on to the, well, not quite. Dr. Jenkins, do you have any newly-appointed administrators that we should recognize?
None tonight, Chairman, Members of the Board.
Okay, okay. We're going to, let me begin by asking if there's any members of the public that are here tonight that wish to address the Board, that you need to fill out a yellow speaker card. We have quite a few. It seems that most people are here on rezoning. If there's anybody in the audience who hasn't filled out their speaker card, please do so. We will call you at the time that we get to this item, which is just around the corner in just a minute. You will have three minutes to speak, and you, many of you may have been here before, you probably know how this goes. This is an opportunity to provide testimony to the Board. It's not a debate session, so you probably won't hear comments from the Board members unless they have specific questions around what you say. Your input is extremely important, and we know that those of you that are here want to talk about rezoning. Everybody up here is a parent. We know what you're going through, we know how personal this is, and we take it very seriously. So I just want to share that with you in advance. And with that, let's move on then to our agenda, and we're going to start with our rezonings. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman, Members of the Board. Dr. McGowan will redress with you what we've discussed in our last Rule Development Workshop regarding rezoning and look for some direction from the Board after public comment.
Dr. McGowan, welcome.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you. Good evening. Prior to beginning our presentation, let me introduce student enrollment staff who's with me this evening. Next to me is Renata Peropche, she's one of our senior administrators, and I have Dr. Andy Westerman, who's here with us also. This evening, we'll be following School Board Policy JC. There's the thingy. Okay, sorry about that. And School Board Policy JC is the policy we follow for rezoning. The first four steps are the things that happen prior to coming to any public meeting, and then steps five through eight have our community meeting, our meetings, a Rule Development Workshop, a public hearing, and then how we keep our rezoning notebook for public. For this rezoning, the timeline, we had our community meeting on March 4th, the Rule Development Workshop was March 28th, and tonight, on April 9th, we're here for the public hearing. As part of rezoning, we have something called a grandfathered transfer that is in place as we go forward. There are three separate criteria that a student could meet to request to stay at a school under the grandfather transfer. The first one is the student's been rezoned two or more times during a grade level, a student who's been rezoned from an established school to another established school, or the student will be a fifth or eighth grader when the new school opens. There is no transportation under the grandfather transfer, and each student has to meet the criteria for this one. We ask for input from our families, and they can do that in one of three ways. We have an electronic community survey that is up on our website. They can provide input by email, or they can send us a petition. Before we start with this one, we do want you to, we did provide you a really pretty map of the input, you have it in your documents, and it has the map that shows where the folks were who provided the input. At this time, I will turn it over to Renata to go through the watermark targeted rezoning.
Let me orient you through the map first. The green line represents middle school boundary line for 2019-20 school year. Two schools involved into this rezoning are Bridgewater Middle School and 37 MSW 4, which was recently named Horizon West Middle School. The area we are proposing to rezone is in yellow. It is south of Seidel Road. This area is zoned for Horizon West Middle School. There are currently 16 OCPS middle school students residing in the targeted area. The recommendation is to move targeted area from Horizon West Middle School to Bridgewater And if this rezoning is approved, this is how the middle school zones are going to look. The purple area is Horizon West Middle School, and the green area is Bridgewater Middle School. This rezoning will commence August 2019. We have received input from 11 families, all in favor of this rezoning. This concludes my presentation. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. I don't, I don't believe we have any...
The rural development workshop was March 28. And tonight, on April 9, we're here for the public hearing. As part of rezoning, we have something called a grandfathered transfer that is in place as we go forward. There are three separate criteria that a student could meet to request to stay at a school under the grandfather transfer. The first one is the student's been rezoned two or more times during the grade level. A student who's being rezoned from an established school to another established school. Or the student will be a fifth or eighth grader when the new school opens. There is no transportation under the grandfather transfer, and each student has to meet the criteria for this one. We ask for input from our families, and they can do that in one of three ways. We have an electronic community survey that is up on our website. They can provide input by email, or they can send us a petition. Before we start with this one, we do want you to, we did provide you a really pretty map of the input. You have it in your documents, and it has the map that shows where the folks were who provided the input. At this time, I will turn it over to Renata to go through the watermark targeted rezoning.
Let me orient you through the map first. The green line represents middle school boundary line for 2019-20 school year. Two schools involved into this rezoning are Bridgewater Middle School and 37 MSW 4, which was recently named Horizon West Middle School. The area we are proposing to rezone is in yellow. It is south of Seidel Road. This area is zoned for Horizon West Middle School. There are currently 16 OCPS middle school students residing in the targeted area. The recommendation is to move targeted area from Horizon West Middle School to Bridgewater Middle School. And if this rezoning is approved, this is how the middle school zones are going to look. The purple area is Horizon West Middle School, and the green area is Bridgewater Middle School. This rezoning will commence August 2019. We have received input from 11 families all in favor of this rezoning. This concludes my presentation. Dr. Jenkins?
All right. I don't, I don't believe we have any speakers here for this rezoning request. Just want to check. I don't want to overlook anybody. Ms. McGowan, does that conclude your presentation?
For this rezoning.
Okay. And are we looking for a vote at this point in time? Okay, so then let me turn the floor over to Member Gould.
At this point, I would recommend that we take up this targeted rezoning as recommended by the superintendent and staff.
We have a motion by Member Gould. Do we have a second? We have a second by?
Second.
By Member Gordon? Any further discussion or comment from board members? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Member, Ms. McGowan?
Thank you, ma'am. And we're going to move on to our next rezoning, which is 85 EW4. And to remind all of us that the 85 stands for our real estate number in OCPS. The E is elementary. The W is the West Learning Community. And 4 is the School Board Member District. And at this point, we have our map of where the school will be. And we want to start first with the area and orient ourselves and look at the development. The red lines are the school zone lines for the 1920 school year. The line on the far left side is the Lake County line. The line at the bottom is Osceola County. The hash mark area is Walt Disney World. This, this map is showing us the development within the area. And we can see that the green, if we go one more. Okay. The first arrow shows us 85 EW4, which is the school we're rezoning for. Our next arrow shows us the next school that should be built in this area, and it's 89 EW4. And 89 is scheduled to be open in 2023. And 85, the one we are rezoning for this evening, is to open in 2020. Let us take a walk in history. This is a dot map that shows our student population in the year 2013-14. Our next slide shows the population in 2016-17. Our next slide shows the population this year. Our next slide shows the projections for 2021. If we start with our first map, the, again, the red lines are showing us the existing school lines for the 2019-20 school year. The shaded areas are representing the proposed zone under this option. The area in orange is Keans Crossing. The area in pink would be the New Independence Zone. The area in yellow would be the zone for 85 EW4. And the area in green is 49 EW4, which was recently named Waterspring. Each of the text boxes gives us a quick overview about information for the school. It will give you the school name, the permanent program capacity, the number of students residing in the proposed zone now, and the projected number of students in that zone in 2020. This option with our data table, we have provided, the first column is the school and the permanent program capacity. The second column gives us the enrollment for October 15, the percentage of white, black, other. And then the fourth row gives us our percentage of non-Hispanic Hispanic. The third column is the enrollment for February 15, and it's laid out in the same order. Our next column gives us the current students residing in the area and then the proposed for 2020. If we go forward and look at the proposal, it gives us the percentage of white, black, other for the second row. The third would give us our Hispanic, non-Hispanic Hispanic, and then our projection for 2020. In our next five rows, we provide information on the students for their scores with the FSA Math and ELA. The C stands for the current that resides in the zone. The P is proposed zone. So math, if we look at Independence, we see current is three, proposed is four. If we look at English Language, we have six and seven. The next column is farms or free and reduced meals. So under this one, current is 20, proposed is 25. Next column is the percentage of students that are receiving exceptional education services. In this case, nine and nine for Independence. And our last column is the percentage of students within our English Language Learner Program. Give you a few moments to review. Option two, which was option five when we were here for the rural development, gives us the same red lines for the 1920 school zone. And then the area in orange would be Keans Crossing under this option. The purple would be Independence under the option. Yellow and green remain the same. It's from the other option. Green is 49 EW4, and yellow is 85 EW4. And Renata will circle the two areas that basically changed with this one from the first one you saw. And if we look at our data table. Again, I will give you time to review. Our next map or slide shows both options side by side. And then our next slide provides information on the enrollment and the projections. First row will give us the current residing. The second row gives you the student projections for 2020. And the dark blue row shows you the projection for 2022, which is one year prior to when we anticipate our next school opening in the area. As of this morning, we had received information from 76 families. We had, well, 71 families as of yesterday. 19 support advertised option one, 56 family opposed. We had the reverse for option two. 56, 50 families, 55 families supporting option two and 20 opposing. We received five additional notices or inputs from our families, and they were in support of option two. Superintendent's staff, you know, when we came back, we were asked to advertise two options. Our superintendent's staff recommendation at rural development was option three, which is now option one. So we brought both back for your review. And that concludes our presentation, Dr. Jenkins.
Okay, thank you. We will now take public comments. We have quite a few members of the public that wish to speak. So let me begin in the order, actually, several of you, I think, put them in an order that you wanted to speak. So we'll try to honor that. Carrie, thank you. I'm gonna try. Carrie? Megan, Megan Ron? Meggensen. I'll split the difference with you on that, whether it was your writing or my reading. But it was pretty good writing. Probably, I'll take it.
That's okay. That's okay.
If you can give your name and address.
Some people call me Megan, but it is Carrie.
So when you're ready.
We have a presentation.
Uh huh.
It's on.
Okay.
Thank you.
And are you gonna walk through it with each of you, taking a segment of it?
Yeah.
Is that the goal? Okay.
Yes.
So if you just have everybody kind of queued up? Like on deck?
Yes.
Like you guys will be sitting in the front row?
Oh, you can sit here? Perfect.
Okay, and when you're ready, give your name and an address for the record, and we'll start the timer.
Before I start, I would like to recognize we do have other members from our community here, both students and families. So if you guys could raise your hand as well.
Very good. You all probably know the protocol. No outbursts, no cheering, no jeering, no boos and hisses. But raising your hand is always a good way to communicate. Thank you. When you're ready. And each one of you, you'll be given three minutes once you conclude your time with your name and address, if you can remember to give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Carrie Meggensen, 6226 Crescent Moon Court, Windermere. I've sent three of my kids to Keans Crossing, and I'd like to send my fourth. We moved Summerport to Eden Isle, never expecting this to happen. We are here today to share why we are not supportive of option one and present revised options that meets the needs of the board and the community. We've worked to create a thoughtful proposal that is a compromise between option one, previous option three, and option two, previous option five. So background on where we are. Horizons West was built on the foundation of walkable communities. This is a concept that we all bought into. Eden Isle and Summerport Trails are part of Summerport Village. You pass Summerport Publix and the Summerport signs off of 535 in order to enter and exit our neighborhoods. Eden Isle and Summerport Trails are part of the walkable neighborhood Summerport Village, where Keans is the neighborhood school. But we were rezoned to Independence last April. This will be the fifth school in the 15 years for our community, the fifth. Rezoning was passed last April with the understanding staff would bring back targeted rezoning by October 2018. Option passed despite receiving the most opposition in the official community voting process. Because of the public's opposition, the board chair did make it clear that Eden Isle and Watermark would be part of the targeted rezoning. We have the timestamps and exact board member quotes from that meeting stating aiding Eden Isle should be reviewed. Since that meeting in April, Watermark received a full, separate, three-part process for their targeted rezoning, and Eden Isle was lumped in the rezoning for 85 EW4 Elementary School. Given the motions and emails received, we fully expected all options presented would include moving Eden Isle back to Keans. This was not what occurred, and our neighborhood instead was only considered part of a very broad area. So our reasons why we do not support option one, first, this is highly opposed by the community, not this, the first time, as well as now the second time. All of the survey results clearly note this is not the favorite option by the community that you all support. Voting for option one is voting against those that you represent. Many of us are here today to share our thoughts. We are working parents, living on the west side of town with elementary-age schoolchildren. We all have busy lives, as you all know, today. These meetings are extremely difficult for us all to attend. Those that cannot be here use the survey to voice their support. Not everyone can be here today, but they have a voice that must be reconsidered. They have clearly spoken and do not support option one. Second, this option does not address the commitment the board made at the April meeting to specifically look at Eden Isle. Third, this option moves our residential neighborhoods within our walkable community away from elementary school that's integrated into our village lifestyle. Fourth, bus transportation will be required that comes at a cost. Fifth, this option significantly compromises safety of our children in these neighborhoods by moving them to a school that is no longer safely walkable or bikeable. Instead, requires travel along long, busy, accident-prone roads to get to school. My children safely use neighborhood paths to bike to Keans. There's absolutely no way I would allow my seven-year-old on 535 in Fayette. Biking, he loves to do to school. There's no way I can do that. Finally, as mentioned earlier, this will be the fifth time, fifth time for our neighborhood. Families should not have to go through that. We should be disappointed in ourselves for disrupting families and children yet again, just to meet numbers.
Thank you. Please.
All right, thank you. All right. Good evening, Chair, members of the board, superintendent. My name is David Sibila. I live at 13938 Floor Gold Drive, Windermere, Florida, 34786. I'm gonna continue to walk us through this presentation. Okay, so basically, we are presenting three options that are kind of a blend between the two proposals that are brought before you today. It's a very easy solution that we've researched thoroughly with the help of Ms. Gould and Ms. McGowan to get us to this point. There are two areas that we want to focus on, and I'll take you through them a little bit more detail in just a second. First is our two new developments that have yet to be constructed yet from Taylor Morrison that are part of the Hamlin community. The Hamlin communities that are existing, Hamlin of Overlook and Hamlin Cove and Lake Wall currently are being rezoned to Independence starting next year. We are proposing that these two undeveloped Hamlin communities that are yet to come will also continue to be rezoned for Independence. They are all a frontage to New Independence Parkway. And it doesn't make any sense for half the neighborhood to go to Independence and go one direction, and the other half of these two new neighborhoods to literally make a left-hand turn and go to a different school. The, and I'll walk you through that right now. So basically, that is circled area number one on this map. This is a photo of option, what was option three now is option one. So that area that I'm talking about with Hamlin is zone number one. The second option zone that we want to look at is whereas the Summerport Village area is being lumped in as one big area. And these neighborhoods are hard to delineate. I mean, it's part of the Horizon West master plan. But those of us who live here can easily walk you through where that makes sense. And where it makes sense is the Addison, which is an apartment complex, and a townhome and single-family neighborhood called the Vineyards. Both have direct frontage to Fayette Road and have the most direct access to Independence. Whereas the rest of the neighborhoods of Eden Isle, Merrick Landing, and Summerport Villages would have to drive through these neighborhoods to get to Fayette, adding more traffic through the neighborhoods and more traffic onto Fayette. Basically, we're looking at, as Carrie mentioned, considering the safety of our children, the impact on the communities, and preserving the Horizon West master plan. Here are some closer looks at these delineations. This map shows you a red line that divides the Addison and the Vineyards from the other Summerport Villages neighborhoods. Again, they have direct access onto Fayette, whereas we don't. This is the closer look at the two new Taylor Morrison neighborhoods that are part of Hamlin, and we're proposing would stay with the Hamlin community. And then these are two additional deeper cuts. This is a neighborhood that is north of Summerport, not a part of Summerport, and part of the walkable community that are currently being bused to Keans Crossing and could be bused to another school. And then finally, Independence Phase Three, which is part of the Independence community, but it's currently rezoned for Keans Crossing and has residential streets and walkable trails that access them to Independence Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys are impeccable on your time. A lot of practicing went into this. Very good. Thank you. Welcome, sir.
I want to say thank you to the board for listening to our plea. Again, I'm another Eden Isle resident. My name is Grant Lehman. I live at 14038 Eden Isle Boulevard. So I'm gonna go through this last slide, which shows the enrollment projections. The 2022 projections show 139 student difference between Independence Options Three and Five and 168 students difference at Keans between Options Three and Five. And if you look at the circled items, you can see these are the numbers that were provided by the school board and then our proposed options underneath. Based on the enrollment numbers provided each area, our proposal, it gets extremely close to the numbers, and the committee was willing to support in Option Three, and only requires modifications to two areas that we asked for you to consider. Of note, the only difference between Option One and Option Two are the undeveloped area in Hamlin that we recommend staying at Independence and the area we suggest be divided out Eden Island Vineyards. All other areas remain the same. The appendix notes are these areas. Current 2022 projections show a difference of 139 kids at Independence and 168 at Keans between the current options. Looking at only the first two modifications we are proposing, which is removing Hamlin area and dividing Eden Isle and Summerport Trails from Addison and Vineyard communities, gets you extremely close to the numbers the committee was willing to support in Option Three. In the far right-hand columns of the bottom chart, you can see our proposed numbers. This does not consider the other areas mentioned, as we understand that may slow the process, but areas to consider further if needed. We strongly encourage the board to vote for new Option Two, formerly Option Five, with a targeted rezoning to remove undeveloped Hamlin, still-in-development Vineyard communities, and the newly opened Addison Apartments. We have spent several hours of time putting this together on top of our daily responsibilities of work and parenting. We have driven around to better understand areas considered. We've held meetings, conference calls. We have spent time away from our kids and families to prepare for today's meeting. We have done this between PTO meetings, soccer, baseball practices, business trips. We did this because this is extremely important to us as a community and parents. Although those that filled out the survey may not be here, their voiced opinions need to be heard as well. Again, we strongly encourage you to vote with the community and that the voiced their support here enough, here through the survey, vote Option Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Jenkins. My name is Carlos Fernandez, I reside in 13756 Summer Harbor Court, part of the Summerport Trails community. So thank you for your time today. I come to you as a former educator, as a Keens Crossing community member, and most importantly, as a concerned parent. I moved my family to central Florida five years ago. Of all the places we could have moved to, we fell in love with the Summerport community. So much that I built my home in Summerport Trails. The number-one factor my wife and I took into consideration when making that decision was a school in which our children would attend. As a former educator, we understand and value the importance of great education, and after meeting Principal Donaldson and her administrative team, we knew that instantly this was the community for us. Getting the opportunity to wake up every morning and walk my daughter to school is something that I cherish each day, and I know that she will look back on those great memories and conversations we've had. We currently live less than a mile away from Keens Crossing Elementary School. We have friends in the Eden Isle community. A school in which, Keens Crossing, a school in which we have forged a valuable community relationship with. A school where my wife has served as room parents, as we have served as part of the community. And a school in which we constantly look for new ways to support the teachers and administration, in which we so importantly care for. My oldest daughter has soared academically in Keens Crossing. And I hope that by the end of this meeting, a decision will be made that will allow her younger brother and sister, as well as our friends here with us, to share the same experience. I stand here to ask you to please keep Summerport Trails and the Eden Isle community in Keens Crossing Elementary. You have in front of you options that would allow our community to stay intact, that we can continue to support the school that we have so much incredible passion and support for and ties to. Propose to your numbers that will meet your intended population goals for Keens Crossing without impacting the current and future Keens Crossing students that reside in these communities. Our community has now voted, not once, but twice, in favor of Option 2, formerly Option 5. Lastly, as educators, and I know all, each and every one of you are, as a former educator, I ask you to remember the most important task as an educator, that is to keep our children safe amongst, before anything else. The option that you proposed last school board meeting, Option 3, does not take our children's safety into consideration. You're asking a community that walks and bikes each morning to school on a safe bike pathway to now walk or bike over 3.5 miles. This makes no sense, and you're putting their lives in danger. We are here representing our community. A community is a group of people that live in the same place or having a particular characteristic in common. That characteristic is Keens Crossing Elementary School. It is the foundation of our community. And right now, their future, our future, our kids' future is in your hands. Please make this difficult but correct choice in Option 5, formerly Option 5, currently Option 2, and allowing our children and their younger siblings the opportunity to continue and thrive academically in Keens Crossing Elementary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Danielle Ritchie, 14137 Eden Isle Boulevard. And I, as someone who does understand all the data that has been presented and has looked at the data, and has taught high school math for this county and been the head of the math department for many, many, many years, up until last year, I can tell you that they have presented something that's a viable option, and they've spent a lot of time doing it. Now, my son, my middle son Tyler, started at Lake Whitney. He then went in the same home, when I purchased my home, I bought the lot in 2002, the home was built in 2004. He started at Lake Whitney, then he moved to Whispering Oak. Then we said, well, we're still going to move you to Sunset Park Elementary. Then finally, we were told by the board that this was your home school. You were going to be at Keens Crossing Elementary. It's just unacceptable to me, and I don't understand why you would consider moving. Again, I mean, we're such a small community in the big picture, and I understand that you have to follow the data and look at the numbers, and I totally 100% agree with that. But you need to also stop and look at, this community is one of the original communities. My house was one of the original houses in Horizons West. Several of us that are not here tonight bought other properties where Grandma, my mother-in-law, stands at the corner so my son could go across the street from Keens Crossing Elementary to her house at times. We bike, I bike, I mean, numerous times. So to even ask them to go around, if you've actually driven that area, which I'm sure some of you have, to even ask them to go over to Fayette Road. If you look at Fayette Road right now, I know that there's the lights getting ready to be put in. If you look, there is a bumper of a car constantly there. It's very dangerous. I would not send my son that way. And also, when he's riding through Summerport, he has left his cellphone at times where I didn't ride with him. There are four moms along the way that are like, we saw Logan, he forgot his cellphone, he wanted to tell you, you know, do this or do that after school. This is a school where the kids know each other. They've been in this community, we've purchased more than one lot, we've gone through all the growing pains of not having lights, of not having roads, and now asking us to move to another school, to me, is just unacceptable. And so, please, 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 look at that, because how could you ask the neighborhood to do that again? When you look at that small neighborhood, and Pam, I'm sure you understand that we've gone through a lot. So her plea and the emotional plea that you just had from some of the people here is how we all feel, and I apologize that I haven't been here since day one. I was out of town at two of the meetings, but we need to make sure that that neighborhood stays. I don't think many of you realize how many changes our neighborhood has had to go through from the very beginning. So please, please, vote for Option 2.
Thanks, Ms. Ritchie.
Thank you.
I think there's one more with your group? And then we have two more speakers after that.
Good evening. Chair Jacobs, Superintendent Jenkins, Board Members. My name is Rodrigo Fiori, 6419 Earth Gold Drive, Windermere, at Eden Isle. As you can see, we're trying to come up with a solution that meets the school board members' goals of balancing the enrollment numbers as well as our goals of keeping our community together. I just wanted to reiterate, while my neighbors have already presented you, we are established community, part of the Summerport Village, and this will be our fifth rezoning. The board is giving priority to newer communities, such as the Addison Apartment, an apartment rental complex where their residents are more likely to move in and out, and therefore do not have the same sense of community as we do. Also, the board is giving priority to Independence Phase 3 by keeping then at Keens Crossing Elementary. I understand that that community is within a walking distance from Keens Crossing, but they're not part of Summerport Village neighborhood. They should stay within their namesake community school. By moving our community in the aisle to Independence, the board is not only breaking up the community, but also splitting up siblings. My son Lucas, who is eight years old, he is at third grade at Keens Crossing, and he does have an option to stay there. However, my daughter Bianca, she's only five, and she's about to start kindergarten next year. She will not be able to attend her brother's school. She's been talking about that since a very early age, to go to her brother's school, to be with her friends, but now, due to the board's decisions, she may not be able to do that. My son has gotten very anxious with the possibility of being moved out of Keens Crossing, and I guarantee that I will not do that. Which means, right now, me and my wife will have two elementary-age kids going to two different elementary schools, such as Carrie and many other of our neighbors. So please take that in consideration when making your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we also have Bethany Landis. Pardon me? Right, the next two cards I have is Dominique. I have Bethany Landis and Dominique Shim... yes. You'll help me with your last name when you come up, thank you.
Hi, my name's Bethany Landis, I live at 13937 Eden Isle Boulevard. To start off, I just want you to know where I stand. My two kids technically could be grandfathered in, but our neighborhood is such a family that that upsets me, that they would go there, and all my neighbors would go somewhere else. To know that they could literally live next door and not go to school together is very heartbreaking. Secondly, I just want to go back to the apartment complex. It's very frustrating when a brand-new building is built, and they get to get our school, and we get rezoned somewhere else. So I didn't understand that part. When something is being built and it's brand-new, why they get to then take our school away? They are actually closer to Independence than us, too. I guess that part made it really hard for us to understand. I understand when a new school is built, if a new school is built right by our neighborhood, I understand, we would need to go to this new school, totally understandable. But when you move us to a school that's not even closer, it's in fact farther away, where now we cannot bike or walk. All these things we go through, and we're not understanding, basically. We moved from very far away, and when we moved from Hawaii, and when we moved here, we didn't go house hunting, we went school hunting. We drove around for a whole week, my husband and I didn't work for a whole week, and went and looked at every school, and researched every school. We fell in love with Keens, and then we found a house that we thought would, how could ever be rezoned unless they build a new school? So we always said, oh, it's okay, if they build a new school, that's such as it. But we just never thought that we would be moved to a school that's farther away. I love this school so much that I substitute there pretty much every day. I want to support them, I want to be there and help out, and that's what I do. So please reconsider your options and have us stay at Keens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our last speaker, Dominique Shimizu? Close, not bad.
Dominique Shimizu, 6625 Earth Gold Drive, Windermere. I'm with this group here, I live in Eden Isle. I support Option, the new Option 2, I guess it's called, the old Option 5. You know, these guys have already made a lot of these arguments I was planning to also support as well. So I guess what I want to add is my personal story. For more than 10 years, I worked in Osceola County, drove to celebration. You might think, why don't we just buy a house there and live there? I believed in a dream here in Orange County, in Horizon West. I believed that we could be just as good, just as unique, just as much of a sort of community with that sort of feeling. And I feel like we're building, we're getting there. One really important thing for me is the schools. And we moved him out of his past school into Keens Crossing because it was such a good school. We want to stay there. We generously have been given that grandfather. Now my younger daughter will be rezoned. I feel like we have invested so much for so long in sort of this idea that we would be at the school, that to be rezoned, you know, it's tough, like the previous speaker said. We could live with that, but I feel like on top of that, our community, you know, has that feel that we can walk and that we can commute, we can be a part of what's going on in our growing village that's growing in that direction. It just makes more sense for us as a family and us as Eden Isle to be part of that school. And so I ask that you really consider the option that was presented here, and then the targeted rezoning, which could balance our numbers, and everybody could be happy with that. So please, Option 2, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking the time to come back down and share those concerns. I know we discussed the plan for Horizon West at the last meeting, and I think the one thing that I maybe did not share with the board, especially board members that haven't been around for a long time, not only was this the first planned community in all of central Florida, where schools were the cornerstone of the neighborhoods, but this was the first time in the history of Orange County where the school district helped to identify those schools. So the school district cited the schools, the neighborhoods were cited around the schools. So I just want to impart that little bit of history as we move forward with this discussion with the board. Member Gould.
So first and foremost, you know, this is community activism that we like to see. I mean, I try to be as accessible as I can to all the community members, but your input has been absolutely invaluable, you know, throughout this entire process. And we've gone back to the drawing board a number of times based on input, and I'm going to shock the board members here tonight, but I want to do it one more time. And not pass one of these options tonight, but actually look at the data that's been supplied, it's very impressive. As the chair had said last time, the ideal is to try to have the Horizon West dream fulfilled when we ultimately settle in all of the growth that we're experiencing. And unfortunately, move-ins and growth do not happen in contiguous manners, in all ways, especially in Horizon West. We have pockets of things happen here, and then more activity rushes in over here, and then it gets backfilled over there, and it has caused kind of this gyration of population. We've actually moved school sites priorities twice because of that shift in how that growth happens with the development. If it would just kind of go like this, it'd be so much easier. But it doesn't. But that said, I think with really having a better understanding of where Summerport and Independence footprints go, and to the best of our ability, I would like staff to look at it one more time. There is a, there's a lot of nuance right there. We're going to have some crossover just because of how close the school sites are. We did talk about that when you were asking me a lot of questions about how this process happens. But I think it's worth another look. So with that, I would like to ask Dr. McGowan to submit advertised options 1 and 2, along with a new third option. But I want to make sure that you understand this, that doesn't mean that we've made any decisions on the three options, because I think that got confused when we talked about the targeted rezoning. So I want to make sure, when we say we're reviewing, it really is review. I'm not saying it won't happen, but I'm not saying it will happen either. So I just, I don't want to, you know, set expectations and then have you disappointed at another time. But that would be my recommendation to the board this evening, is to actually table this and send it back to staff one more time to look at that differentiation between those two communities. And I've actually asked Dr. McGowan, would like her to look at the two intersecting Independence and Summerport with the input of this very well-thought-out and laid-out data that we were shown tonight.
So let me get clarification?
Good, before I call Ms. McGowan. Does this, I'm assuming this requires a motion to table and to direct staff to go back out, correct? Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll hold on your motion just a minute. We've got, but I think it's extremely helpful that you put that on the table before we hear from the rest of the board members, so that those of us who were pretty, felt that, you guys did a phenomenal job. And this short-cutted a lot of time by you clarifying that. Miss, perfect. Ms. McGowan, you want to respond to that? And then we're going to, I've got a lineup of four speakers.
Dr. Jenkins, I think, wants to speak.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Jenkins always comes first.
So just for clarification, I didn't want anyone to misunderstand. The reason we have to reboot the process is because if we introduce something that was not advertised, the rest of your neighbors and communities have to have an opportunity as you have had. And so actually, there won't be a vote tonight to support anything, but I wanted you to understand, the reboot of the process is so others who are now involved, or may be involved in the rezoning, have to have the same opportunity. And so after, Ms. McGowan can actually tell you some of the dates that would be involved, but we have to go back out and do the community meeting over again, and have rural development workshop and so forth. It's a restart of the process, so we're clear.
Dr. Jenkins, so you and I are clear. I'm still going to call for a vote on tabling this.
Absolutely.
Not going to be a vote on what the final decision is. Okay, wonderful, thank you. This is my first time where we've gotten to this point, so I just want to make sure that I'm operating under the same procedures. Ms. McGowan?
Yes, ma'am. If you vote to table this, we've looked at our calendar, or I should say, your calendars, and we would host our community meeting, it's tentatively for like April 24. On May 2 would be the rural development workshop, and the public hearing would be May 14. If that's at the...
Oh, hang on.
Nope.
May 2 is our strategic planning work session, we have a consultant there, we can't...
Well, we will find another...
We will find dates, no need of...
Okay, we will do that.
Yeah, we've had too many issues.
Okay. All right, let's hear from Vice Chair Gould, I'm sorry, Gordon?
That's all right, it's a G.
It's a G. I just, yeah, I need a...
Okay, well, number one, I think, thank you, Madam Chair, and to the Superintendent, and to Dr. McGowan. My major concern was hearing the few speakers that we had the last time, and that is why I propose to do the two at... that is why I proposed to do the two advertising. And I feel that based on going back, doing the two advertisement, what I'm hearing here is just a slight change of taking those two that we sent back to be advertised, in fairness to you, because it would have only been one, which would have been totally unfair, even though we were not in, we weren't comfortable with, with, with either, you guys were not comfortable with either. But, I like what I'm hearing with the slight changes, because I think it's going to do what should be done. I have been on this board since the inception, and when I hear my moms out there crying, I know this is what we promised that would not happen, okay? We promised you shouldn't have to get up here, cry, it's not fair. You just say, "I will not go," we will not go, move us. You know, because it's, it comes a time when you have to stand up and fight. You're raising children, you're raising babies, and to move the babies from one place to another is really hard. I, I was going to mention what Dr. Jenkins mentioned, but she talked about the work session. Now, our Pam, Board Member Gould talked about with the Option One and Two, and then coming back with the third option. Some kind of way, I, I would, I would hate all of that, but since we've already put out one and two, I'm hoping that when you do go back, and then some kind of way, we've already advertised, Dr. Jenkins, so we, and if we're tabling it, we could also remove something, and we can also remove it, because it's already been advertised out there. So, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that the work session, coming in, then being able to get back to the board what was discussed, so we will know those slight changes. They're trying to combine, from what I'm hearing, they're trying to combine one and two and bring it back to us, maybe as one and then the two, one and two being a 2A or something, I'm going to have to reinvent another name. And, and I need clarification from, from the homeowners on that, and the parents on it, if this is what, what they are asking, because that, that is very, very important, because if they could combine Option One and Two, and then satisfy the community and work, and I, and I think I'm hearing Ms. Gould saying the same thing, that this is what we wanted the last time we met. But, I also want to make sure that it can get to the board in a timely manner, because you talk about the April 24th and then the May 22nd on the rural development. So, what, what I'm concerned about, and I know Dr. Jenkins has the strategic plan coming, so that won't work. And I know we're getting into the end of the year, and that's going to be hard trying to get dates. So, I just need the community to just clarify it for me. I know that you and Ms. Gould understand it, but I don't see how this board could have understood it, because that's not what we put out there. And in order for this board to understand it, then we'll be violating sunshine, some kind of way, because none of us know what you know. But, I know that most of us up here, I'm speaking for myself, like what I hear. I love what I hear, with the, with the combination of the Option One and Two, which will not tear that community up. You, you really don't deserve to be torn up anymore. So, if I can just get a little bit more clarification from those that spoke, and those were like the first three speakers that mentioned the slight change, the, the very viable option, and moving the community to gather again, because you all were the original property owner when we put this together. So, just make it a little bit clearer, so we'll know what we will be looking at when you go back in your meeting, and then I'm hoping that Dr. McGowan's team could bring us back what you are saying, that you really can't legally say today, because it's not legal to vote on or say it.
Okay. So, what, what is on the screen is Option Three. Currently, Option One, which no one supports, I believe, or it's, has limited support. So, what we are recommending is look at four areas. The first two should get you to the numbers that you need to, your targeted enrollment. That first, number one, that's the undeveloped land at Hamlin. They are currently, they would go through Independence to get to Keens. We are saying keep those at Independence. The second option, we are saying, look at, look at the Summerport Village community. There is a clear line on where you can draw the, the, for the zoning. On the left is Summerport Village, which includes E. Denial, Summerport Trails, those of us that have spoke today. On the right is the new, still being developed vineyards and the Addison Apartments that face Faket. So, those are the two. With those two, you can get to your numbers, or very close to the numbers of targeted enrollment. If needed, we also believe there's, we understand this is a long process, so to be considerate of those that have not already been communicated to, we said if needed, there is a third option that you could consider, that is the community near the west, that's number three, near the West Orange Country Club. That's about 19 students. The last option, again, knowing we didn't want to disrupt this process too much more, is number four, which is a small portion of Independence. That's the only portion of Independence that is not zoned for Independence Elementary School. That is approximately 175 children. So, those, those first two are what we put, put forward, because that would, they've already been communicated to, that would limit the, hopefully potentially limit the impact, that gets you to the numbers. If still needed, those other twos, is, those other two options is what we said you could look at. Is that more clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, well, not only, I'm laughing, because I kept Carol McGowan for six hours going through this map, did I not? I kept her six hours, because I was trying to ask her, "Why aren't we doing that?" And, and I just didn't understand it, and even when I came that day, and we didn't have enough options, and, and Board Member Gould didn't know, you know, that you all want to go back and have another little meeting on the meeting, which is good. Your fathers got together, you said golf course, wherever you guys met, school. Thank God you did that.
This has been, this has been time-consuming on our families.
Yeah, I bet it has been, but it, but it may pay off, because this was my concern of why that didn't come up in your meetings. And all she could give us is what those who actually attended, but I heard you loud and clear today. You said, "We are very busy," which we know you are out there, and, and you, you said you missed a couple of meetings, somebody else said that, and you couldn't get to it. So, I think as the word is spreading, so it, I'm, I'm in favor of Board Member Gould tabling it, because this would be the fair thing to do. As long as we could get back the true proposal, so that we could go back and advertise it again, is the most important thing, so that others who may want an input that did not get it, will be able to at least add something, because the word was spread by then.
And the subsequent slides do show it, what the outlines for the other communities as well. Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you so very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Dr. Jenkins.
All right, let's hear from Member Colbert.
Thank you. So, a couple of things, I, I really want to commend you parents for the effort that you've put in and the manner in which you've gone about this. You really did your homework, and I think that you can see that it's paying off, that your board really is listening to you, really wants to work with you. We say all the time, "We want to work with the public, we want to work with the neighborhoods." That's always been our priority, is keeping those neighborhoods together. In fact, if I didn't love my community so much, I think I might want to move out there. You guys are intelligent, thoughtful, committed, community members and parents, and, and I thank you for the manner in which you've gone about this. And Boy Scouts, you need to really take note, because this is what you're here to see, is your government in action and how your government works with the community. I also want to commend Member Gould for the way that she has truly tried to listen and respond to her community, because this is no small feat, as your community is growing so rapidly. So, those are my comments, thank you for allowing me.
Excellent, thank you. Very well said, thank you. Let's, Dr. Jenkins, did you have anything further, or was...
No, we're good.
Okay. Okay, with that, Member Gould, we're ready to hear a motion.
I would like to make a motion to table tonight's discussion and have, or targeted rezonings, and have staff go back and create a third option to be advertised as soon as possible, and get the community meeting started, so that the remainder of the community can have its input.
Member Gould can, okay, we have a motion by Member Gould, we have a second by, definitely by Member Gordon, and I have one question. You said have Dr. McGowan go back and do a third option. I think we're all on the same page here, but I want to make sure the record is clear, that third option would include the recommendations that have come forward from the community. Perfect, okay. Ms. McGowan, before we take a vote on it, you have a look on your face, and I am a body language reader, and we always want to hear from you before we vote, so do you have consternation?
Only that, we'd like to do the research, we absolutely will bring it back, but there's four sections that are marked here. So, you want all four sections within that, or do we have, can we come back with more than one if we need to?
I would, is, are you all right if they, if she comes back with more than one? I think this option, I personally think this option should be in there. I think three is probably the one area where there might be some question about the benefit of removing those 19 students. Member Gould, this is your motion.
I, I would like the staff to digest this and come back with the options that they feel necessary, if it's one or two more, and, because it will go through workshop and it'll go through community support. So, there are some analysis in here, just to validate those.
You're right, because we're going to start all over again?
Yes. It's not like we have to cram it in, in, into a little box right now.
So, we're not deciding, Member Gould, so I'm clear, we're not deciding what we're advertising at this point, but we are deciding what we're bringing back to start this process over again.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, which will include all of this, and it might have multiple recommendations coming from you. Everybody clear on the motion? I, I am now, member, I'm...
Just one other question.
Are you clear? I'm sorry, I'm sure you're clear.
Okay, thank you, I'm very clear, but just one other option, I just wanted to ask the Superintendent and Dr. McGowan, you know, on the speedability, how quick should this be done, the turnaround, thank you, on it, because I know some, you know, we're, the longer we wait, the more crowded it gets out there. I want to tell Ms. Colbert, you got to go out there, Ms. Colbert, I was out there Friday. I end up in Lake County following, you know, I mean, y'all know where, no, I'm not going to tell you, y'all know the little road. If you've never been on that Independence and back in there, I don't know how you all do it, y'all know y'all go up and around Lake County all the time, because everything is interwining up in there. But, I needed to know, Dr. Jenkins, about timing for the building of the schools.
Please.
So, Ms. Gordon, the, and members of the audience, you understand, the process requires, when we put it in the newspaper and we advertise the dates, that newspaper begins the clock ticking, and you can't have a workshop, which is with the board, no sooner than at least 14 days after it's been in the paper. And you can't vote on it as a board until at least 28 days have elapsed. So, we know May 14th would be the earliest we can get it on a board meeting. The following board meeting is the 28th, which is the day after Memorial Day, but so be it, that may be what it is. It's also the last day of school. We were trying to make sure we could pick a date in which there's enough availability of parents that want to give input. Before it even gets to that first workshop, Ms. McGowan is going to have to have a community meeting again, and so she has to pick a date, tentatively it's the 24th. The one concern I do have is if we can't do it on the 4th, we have our strategic planning session that day with our consultant, we have to find another workshop date, so we will be scrambling after this meeting to figure out the date and make it work, but it'll either be the 14th or the 28th, when it comes back to the board for final consideration. And before that, there will be a workshop of this board for more public input, if, if so be, so.
Okay. That, that answer your question fully? Thank you. All right, helpful. Okay, Member, Member Gould.
I appreciate the, the thoughtfulness with this. I know there is a small group that would get affected in the next school year, correct? That I would like to solve this for before the, before the next school year, so that they know what school they're going to. So, that's my only concern, so maybe, and I know this is difficult for some of us who, who do more than one thing, but maybe we could even start 15 minutes earlier the day of the strategic planning if we can't find another. I'm just throwing that suggestion out, we don't need to solve that here right this minute, but I just want to be sensitive to trying to make sure everybody knows where they're going to school by summer.
Thank you, Member Gould. And perhaps there might be an alternative solution to that as well, that we can talk about at a future, at the future meeting, for those small group of kids who are moving. If we don't give them enough time, perhaps they're, they have one more year. Yeah. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a full understanding of the motion and the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Great job. Okay. Thank you for the hands, yay! Appreciate that. Okay, I know, I did the yay, whoops. Okay. Yeah. Woo, boy, okay.
I thought you said don't yell.
No yelling. All righty.
Say, "We could."
Yeah, exactly. You're welcome. The rules apply to everybody but us. Thank you all. All right. Dr. Jenkins, adoption of the agenda, which I feel like we just had the agenda, but the adoption of the agenda, are there any changes to the consent agenda? We need to do this differently.
There are, Madam Chair and members of the board. So, we have, we had the addition of Item 2.05, that was a declaration, a proclamation that's already been done. And then, by request of Board Member Byrd, Item 1501 is being moved to non-consent, Item 1702, for discussion purposes.
Okay, the Chair finds cause to amend the agenda, agenda's requested. Is there a motion by any member of the board to amend the agenda as recommended? Motion by Member Gould, seconded by, seconded by Member Castor Dennel. All in favor, please say aye. Oops, before we take action on that, we have at this point no speaker cards for anyone who wishes to speak to the consent agenda. Last call, if you're here to speak to the consent agenda. If you're one of our Boy Scouts and you just want to speak for the heck of it, just kidding. No, they're all shaking their head, I don't blame you. Then, all in favor of the motion to amend the agenda as recommended by the Superintendent, please say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a motion? Motion by Member Gould, seconded by a Member Colbert, all, Colbert, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Superintendent information, do we have a report, Dr. Jenkins? Pardon me, non-consent?
We have to do 1701.
I'm sorry, we have to do 1701 and 1702, thank you. So, we have under 1701, Dr. Jenkins, request for the charter school application for Orlando Science Center.
Absolutely, he is here. Dr. Bernier, take us through it.
Yes, ma'am. School Board members, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent. Briefly, Orange County has 41 operating charter schools under contracts with Orange County Public Schools, and every year, the charter school applicants submit any proposal to you as a school board, on or before February 4th, for review. The staff who is present today have taken the opportunity to make sure that this particular application for the Orlando Science program has been reviewed. There are model application requirements as outlined by the state. Mar 1 talks about the education plan, Mar 2 is about the organizational plan, and Mar 3 is about their business plan. In particular of interest with this particular charter school, Orlando Science K-8 is requesting sponsorship for up to 1,164 students in grades K through 8, and the application was submitted. Staff has reviewed, they have done their due diligence, both with the staff interview and with a work session with all of you, and the application can be rated as, with each standard, as meeting the standard, partially meeting the standard, or does not meet the standard. Based upon the complete review, review process, staff and the Superintendent feel there is sufficient reason to believe Orlando Science Charter School has successfully met the requirements, and in addition, it's important to note that this application is a high-performing charter school application, which does create some opportunities for us related to approval.
Thank you. Okay. We have no speaker cards on this application. We have had a presentation on the application before opening the floor for a motion. We have comments from Member Castor Dennel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Bernier, and the Discovery Educational Services, I thank you for your presentation at our last meeting. I found it interesting that so much of you, of what you presented in the binders and assembled for us corresponds to what we offer at OCPS. We teach the same Florida standards, we use the same resources, like C... We teach the same Florida standards, we use the same resources, like C-Palms, RTI, we use the same systems of support, the Marzano Evaluation for Teachers, the same textbooks, even the same professional development topic of close reading. You even have to comply with the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. Today, though, we are presented with a request for a third charter school in Orange County by Discovery Educational Services. And if you recall, I had questions regarding the use of public dollars on facilities and how you spend the capital outlay funds. I think member Colbert may have been who requested audited financial reports, or maybe another member requested those. And they were provided, and since that last meeting. And from what I could gather, looking at those reports, in fiscal year 2016, 2017, the nonprofit Discovery Educational Services spent roughly $545,000 on rent alone for one elementary school. And in the fiscal year 2016, 17, the nonprofit Discovery Educational Services expended about $625,000 on rent for the middle and high school. And that's just one year of the ones that, all the different years that they provided, which is a million dollars, 170,000, $1,170,000 of public school funds were spent in rent. And that seems like a really high figure to me. So I looked into who was receiving the rent payments, and I found that the for-profit company Discovery Educational Properties was the one. And I saw the phrase, quote, "related party through common control," which was a new term for me. So it appears like the nonprofit is the entity that established the charter school, but a for-profit with a similar name and a phrase, quote, "related party through common control" next to it, it just didn't seem to, it didn't seem right to me. So I read further and found that some other payments were made to rent the land for recreation purposes for $78,000 to, a year, to Discovery Educational Properties. Some had different names using just the address of 2601 Technology LLC, which is the address, and they received $100,000. And another entity was called 949 John Young LLC, they received $115,000. And again, that phrase was, quote, "related party through common control." It appeared after each of those, and I, I can't help but be troubled with the seemingly almost disingenuous attempts to kind of obscure who's benefiting from this. I'm not looking at the educational services that are provided, but in how those dollars are being spent, and as board members, our job is to provide educational oversight for our children and to ensure the fiscal accountability to the citizens in Orange County. And I feel like there is a lack of transparency in the previous establishment of the prior schools, and so I am not able to vote in support of an expansion tonight.
Thank you. Obviously, that opens a ton of questions, and I'm not sure whether those questions should be directed at, at Dr. Bernier or at Mr. Rodriguez. Member Kestrel Dennel, is this something that you've shared with either one of them? The reason I ask is because I think, I'm betting I can speak for the rest of the board, that based on what you've said, I want more information, and I doubt that our staff, unless you've talked to them ahead of time, is prepared to help sort through whether this close relationship is lawful or not, just to put it quite frankly. It's not an area that I have a great deal of expertise in. I know, you know, it has to be a not-for-profit. I know that almost all these not-for-profits have a relationship with a for-profit, but I don't know where that line is. So Mr. Bernier, or Dr. Bernier, or Mr. Rodriguez, either or, the superintendent, any of you have enough expertise to give us guidance, and if not, let me ask you this question as well, because we may not get to a comfort zone, no matter what this evening's possibility, is what is the timeframe on having to make this decision?
Okay, I'll get to that last.
Okay, thank you.
I'll ask the staff to come forward and help me with that answer.
Great, thank you.
Specifically related to the relationship between the profit and nonprofit, it, I think the first and foremost is, these numbers were shared with me this afternoon for the first time. It is important for all board members to know that the financials are audited financials. They were reviewed by accountants, and they were viewed based upon the legal matters that govern charter schools. While charter schools are required to start with a 501(c)(3), nothing prevents them from third-party contracts with a for-profit organization. You have other examples operating within Orange County Public Schools right now, related to large management companies who have a 501(c)(3) and a governing board that is independent, but they contract with a for-profit corporation. So the legality of this matter, I could certainly turn over to one of our attorneys, John Palmerini and Woody Rodriguez, but these, these financial audits are audited audits. They are reviewed not by myself, but by independent public accountants and CPAs that have to ensure that these financials are in compliance of Florida law, so.
Can I ask a question, follow-up question on the audits? Dr. Bernier? Dr. Bernier?
Yes, ma'am.
The audits are performed by whom?
They're, they're, they are audited by the CPAs that the schools contract with, but they're also reviewed by the Auditor General of the State of Florida.
Okay. So the one concern I have about an audit, and, there's different types of audits, not having looked at the audit, but one of our members has, obviously, and I think we got all the information, it's not, it's just that I haven't looked at it, is that an audit can confirm whether or not what the reports say are accurate, but an audit doesn't necessarily say whether, what the reports say are appropriate. So based on what I just heard, if the rent is a market rate rent, then, then even though I might find it a little uncomfortable, and I think the public would probably find it uncomfortable, it may be perfectly legal. But on the other hand, if the rent is marked up and not a market rate rent, so as a way to pass more public dollars that are supposed to be going for children's education into the private pockets of the private sector for, for profit that exceeds what the market would support normally, then I have a huge problem. And I don't know if I can know that from looking at an audit, because an audit isn't necessarily going to look at market rate as opposed to, do these financial statements, do they reconcile with the financial activities? Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense to me.
You probably can't answer that, right?
Well, my understanding is it would defer to, to legal counsel, but knowing the state statute as it works with charter schools, very specifically, the law is silent on market rates, and therefore, we can only operate with what's in state statute. The Auditor General can only operate with what's in state statute. I completely understand all the board members' angst, for lack of a better term, regarding some of this, but with a state law that doesn't provide your staff, the Auditor General of the State of Florida, a provision with which to make those determinations, the contract agreements that charter school buildings have with their landlords, or their own entities to pass money publicly to private hands, is in fact legal, but I would defer to counsel. To your other question, Madam Chair, we have 90 days from the submission of the application with which, so we have next month in order to bring it...
What is our dead, our drop dead date?
It would be the last board meeting in May, ma'am.
And if we don't make a decision by that, what's the, we will make a decision, but just so that we, the board's informed, what's the consequence of failing? Does that mean we've approved it? I'm assuming that's...
Ostensibly, yes. They would appeal to the State Board of Education, not the Charter Appeals Commission, and the State Board would approve them.
Okay. Can we get any legal opinion on this, and then I'm going to take, Mr. Palmer, where are you? It's very, hi, Mr. Palmer, I, sorry, I'm not quite used to talking to somebody who I can only see their hand, but, Mr. Palmer, I, we've got, we've got member Gordon and member Gould teed up, so if, I think it'd probably be helpful for us to hear from you first.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Thank you. Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, as Dr. Bernier said, there is nothing in state statute that governs what rent needs, what market rate needs to be set for rent. That is a business decision that the charter school governing board gets to make under the state law. I can tell you, Dr. Bernier and I traveled to Tallahassee multiple times earlier in our careers doing this, where we would make arguments that the nonprofit is being actually controlled by the for-profit management company with respect to how the operation is being set up, how the operation's been run. There's a provision in 1,0233, it's, the charter school governing board has to provide oversight, and we've argued, look, the relationship is entirely too close between the for-profit management company and the not-for-profit charter school governing board, they can't provide oversight. As a matter of fact, I remember saying, it's awful hard for a governing board to provide oversight on their landlord. And the Charter School Appeals Commission and the State Board of Education routinely rejected those arguments and said, that is not legally sufficient reason to turn down a charter school operation. And I would remind you, in this case, this is not just a charter, regular charter school application, this is a charter school application that is a high-performing replication. So the legal standard for disapproving a high-performing replication is actually higher. Normally, it would be a preponderance of evidence standard by which we would get to turn them down. That's a 50% plus one standard. In the statute itself, it actually says for a high-performing replication, that we have to demonstrate by clear and convincing evidence that the application of the high-performing charter school does not materially comply with the requirements of paragraph A above, which is what needs to be in an application, which is what the model application form is. The charter school in the application does not materially comply with requirements of 9A through F of the statute, and I can go through 9A through F, but I believe in our review, we've determined they have complied with all of those requirements. The proposed charter school education program does not substantially replicate that of the applicant or the applicant's high-performing charter schools. We've determined it's a replication of their high-performing charter schools. The applicant has made a material misrepresentation or false statement or concealment of an essential or material fact during the application process. I don't believe staff found any evidence of that. And the proposed charter school education program and financial management practices do not materially comply with the requirements of this section. We haven't made a determination of that. In fact, it does comply with the financial requirements in the section, so. We have made these arguments before, Dr. Bernier and I have lamented the State Board of Education and the Charter School Appeals Commission's rulings before on the way home, but this is stuff that has been raised and has been found insufficient as a matter of law to deny an application by a charter entity.
Excellent report. I have one follow-up question, I don't know if that's for you or Mr. Rodriguez, but I thought I would let him know that it might be coming his way. And so if charter schools are in fact public schools, then aren't they subject to the same Sunshine Standards, the same ethics code that we're subject to? And has anybody evaluated whether these close relationships between their for-profit and not-for-profit organizations violate the self-dealing and conflict of interest under, you know, the relationship clause?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Rodriguez.
Whoever wants to answer it.
Well, I don't, I'm not aware of any evaluations in terms of those relationships, but I'll turn, Mr. Palmerini specializes in the charter schools, so I'll defer to him.
Mr. Palmerini, has that been, has that question been asked?
It, it has, there is a section 16 of the charter school statute that says, "A charter school shall operate in accordance with its charter and shall be exempt from all statutes in the education code except some of the following." And they do have to follow the Sunshine Standards, or the Sunshine Law relating to public records. They have to follow the public meetings section of the law. And you said ethics, right, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I'm actually looking at the Ethics Code separate from the Education Code.
I'm looking at the statute right now, if you give me one second.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot. And so let's take, let's take questions from Vice Chair Gordon and then, or comments, and then, member Gould.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Mine is a little different because, who, Lord, I've, I've sat through so many of this, this, okay, hearing general, well, the general counsel giving his portion, we, we went through, I mean, we've had charter schools that did not comply in some areas, but we did not vote them down from the, from the board table. Excuse me, what we did, we sent our team out, and our team actually had proof of certain things happening from John Q. Public coming in and sharing. And we also had in the past some concerns with, with this, with this charter school before, and they were able to go back and correct it. Even in an audit, even with Orange County School Board or any other board, if there's something that needs to be audited, they have a right to audit what they could audit. But then, we, as a board, they told us, they mandated to us, what we can and cannot do. We are not their local board. We can't legally take them down without some kind of proof coming from our general counsel, along with Mr. Bernier and his staff, and his working back and forth with the state. So, with the charter school governance board, we have had concerns, and we never closed the charter, they closed themselves based on information that we found. So I would assume that this would be something, because what you're bringing here is very serious and it's very heavy, but however, they tell us to, if they do this, and if they comply here and they do this, then it's nothing we could do, pretty much would vote them in now, especially when it comes to a high-performing school that, that's a replica. I mean, they are writing the laws to fit the charter schools. That itself needs to be investigated. But nobody fought it, and it went by, no legislator, got up and fought it, which made it hard for local boards. We are saying, we give the charter schools a hecka lot of help. We said, we need to take our money that we spend helping them to succeed, that we have no voice, we have no voice on their vote, board. We can either approve or disapprove based on what they bring to us. Now, we've found a lot of stuff in between the lines where they copied another application. I mean, we automatically know that without a doubt, because some schools forget to erase the name. So they'll bring it back, but they were given an opportunity to bring back the information and correct it. So what you're saying today would not, I can understand you wanting to do what you are doing, but then I'm also saying, and I need to check with Dr. Jenkins and legal counsel and Dr. Bernier, I, I don't know how we could vote them down today after we went through a workshop and felt that they had made it. And then we have to go before, if you all have never been before the state, which we have been, this board has been before the state in defense. It is awfully hard to win it, and the reason why, because of those legislators, they're running the charter schools. You know them personally. Well, only because you were in the legislation, okay? And, and I'm telling you, is that where we want the dog in the fight? Okay? Do we want to listen to what we are hearing here today and then ask our superintendent to take control of this with the legal counsel and the chairman, and we do more investigation on it? It is worthy of investigation by all means, but however, state statute still protects them. Our job today, whether we like it or not, is to vote them up or vote them down, and you have the right to vote it down. But when you do vote everything down, you better have documents to say, and know it, and know that you know you know, this is why I'm voting them down. Because what I'm basing my vote on, and I cannot vote them down today, even though based on what you're saying, I don't have the proof of it, because I don't know the intricate details, I have to vote them up based on what Dr. Bernier gave us. He went over everything, I argued with them, they know I've argued with them, they know I'm their little hardest person up here. So, I mean, one of the hardest, but it's going to be hard for me not to pass what they gave us, because I have no other documents to do it, but we can also add in, and, and bring it in in another part of this meeting, that we, we do do due diligence and look into that. So with that in mind, Madam Chair and Dr. Jenkins, I know she wouldn't have no comments, because basically, we have to do what we were told to do, but you have a right to vote it up or vote it down.
I just, I want to clarify, because I, I agree... I just, I want to clarify because I agree with, I would not, I would not feel at all comfortable today voting this down. But I also agree with your comment that if there are questions that the board has that they need answers to before voting for this, there is time to get those questions. And I do think that it is, that would be a proper action of the board. But I'm, again, I'm going to look to Mr. Rodriguez or Mr. Palmorini to tell me if there any reason that the board could not continue this to a future meeting if we had specific questions that we wanted to make sure we had the answers to.
I mean, I think given what Ms. Bernier said earlier that it could be voted on at the next meeting without it being, it still being timely at the next meeting, it could certainly be tabled until a date certain. Just in response to the question about the ethics, I'm not sure this will answer all of the questions that were posed earlier by Board Member Castredentl. But the, they are subject to the Code of Ethics. What I would not be able to tell you is whether anyone's done any kind of review about those kinds of relationships. There was a recent article, we're looking here, back in December, where a city attorney was negotiating also on behalf of the charter school, and he was looking for clarity as to whether that posed a conflict. So they're, they're not even a quasi-public agency. I think they are a public agency. They just happen to have a different board that's not elected. And they are still considered public schools. They are still subject to government and the sunshine. They are subject to audits. They're subject to a lot of the things that we would ask of all of our other government agencies. But I think to get to some of the questions you've posed, I'm, I'm not sure if we've answered all of them. If we haven't, then the board has the prerogative to table it until the next board meeting.
All right. Thank you. Member Gould.
Thank you, Member Castredentl, for really shedding some sunshine on, you know, some of these issues. You know, the product of the school has been a very good one. There's, there's not a lot of debate there. They have been a high-performing school. They're doing what they can under the law and what the legislature lets them do. We were up in Tallahassee this last week, and there is talk about more transparency and more oversight. It'll be interesting to see how far that goes through education committees. My trip before this one, when Commissioner Corcoran spoke to the Florida Chambers of Commerce, he was asked a question, not by me, but from someone else in the crowd about some charter school rules. And his, his response was, why would we want to tie their hands? We want them to be innovative. So it's, it's a really weird juxtaposition of wanting us, traditional public schools to also be innovative, but mandating every minute of our day versus, and there has to be some happy medium in both ways. I too, knowing where we sit in the statute, especially on the financial side and having really no authority over that component of it, couldn't vote it down today. If they were an underperforming school, it would be a different story. But I, I, I do appreciate this very open conversation and you taking the time to really help the public understand some of the relationships with some of the schools. Even when they perform well, it, it does beg the question, I'm not saying this school does or doesn't because I don't know what market rate is either. But it does beg the question of, are those dollars going into the classroom the way that they should? So, thank you.
Okay. So, all right, it's time for a motion. I, I'm just going to put this out there. If the motion is to move forward and vote for this today, I will not be supporting it. I would not support denying it today under any circumstance would I support that. But my inclination would be to support continuing this till the next meeting and having an opportunity to try to do a little bit more fact-finding and review of this personally so I feel more comfortable with the information that's been presented. But, so I do want to be clear because I think the motion's probably going to be to move forward today. And I don't want anyone to think that my opposing moving forward today means I would oppose approving it. And yes, I would welcome a motion, whatever your motion is. Member Colbert, you recognize?
I move that we table the approval of this charter school until we have more information, both legally and financially.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by a member, I'm sorry, motion by Member Colbert, seconded by Member Castredentl. And part of the financial, I would, I would ask that our real estate department try to analyze what the rent, what the square footage rent rate is, I would think, or whatever is the best measure. I'm certainly not a real estate expert, but some measure of comparability on that, just to make sure that it's reasonably in line with what one would expect so that we have that information. And then just, it sounds like Mr. Palmorini is highly knowledgeable on this subject, but we're going to give you an opportunity to get even more knowledgeable, just in case there's an opportunity to understand anything else that we should know before the board takes action on this. Did I see a, was there like a fist bump or something over there?
Thumbs up.
A thumbs up. I just, I was unsure what, I knew that was a positive thing. I didn't know what exactly the sign was. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Member Colbert. And thank you, Member Castredentl, for raising this. Please, Dr. Jenkins.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I want to make sure staff has clear direction on what it is you need when we come back. If it is market information for rent, although I'm getting indication that's not something we have authority over, we can certainly have that research. What else would you like for us to bring back? Market rent and?
And I also ask that legal take a look at are there any other things that they could possibly have overlooked with regard to whether there's anything improper? I don't think there is. I think it's something that has bothered me and I think bothered all of us for a long time, but I think it's permissible. But take another look at that, Member Castredentl.
Anything that was imprompt, that might be improper?
Or to further understand the relationships of the related party through common control, those entities that are mentioned in the audit. What are those?
Okay.
What is the common control?
Okay. All right. So three things we're looking at then. You got it? Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I suspect that even if we find, even if we were to find that the, the rent exceeds a market rate rent, I suspect there's little, if any, authority we have over that. But I think that's a piece of information that's important for the public and the legislature to understand. When public funds are going to an entity, it's certainly the public's expectation, I think, that those public funds are going to the education of those students and not into the private sector's hands. I'm not saying that is happening, but since we have this information and we know the close-knit relationship, they are taking an extra look at that, I think is, is highly prudent. So, all right. The next item on the agenda is item 1702, was originally 1501 on the consent agenda. It's been pulled by Member Byrd. And Dr. Jenkins, I'll call on you and then go from there. This is regarding our CEAs, I believe.
Absolutely. Member Byrd asked to pull this for discussion purposes regarding CEAs and particularly the growth in the Apopka area, just for an opportunity for board members to have a discussion at this point and then potentially a future workshop. Member Gould?
Excellent. Member Byrd, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Gould, I'm sorry.
You did say Gould. That's okay. First, I just want to make it clear, I think we did, but I just want to make it clear that I'm not pulling these items to oppose them from happening or being approved tonight. In fact, I'm planning to vote to pass them. I'm just simply pulling them because I feel the need to start a discussion on how we plan for the future capacity needs of our district. And I'll explain that a little bit later. But the, I want to start out by letting you know that the economic, Orlando Economic Partnership recently released a report discussing how our region will have 5 million residents by 2030. And that's only 10 years away now. It used to seem, when we said that, it used to seem that was a far way out, but it's not. They expect 1,500 people moving in each week for the next 11 years. They're forecasting Orange County's population growing by 30%, which could mean as many as 65,000 new students for us. On a neighborhood level, OCPS has historically struggled to maintain lower capacities in high-growth areas such as Avalon Park and Horizons West, which we saw earlier in the work session we had for the rezoning a couple of weeks ago. I was again, you know, just starting to see that we have brand-new schools opening up over capacity or will be shortly after they open over capacity again. My district, specifically surrounding the Beltway, that's almost, that's going to be finished in the next two, couple of years, is the next high-growth area by all accounts. And I just feel like we have to start planning or preparing today for the enormous amount of growth that's projected over the next 10 years. We cannot continue offering overcrowded schools and expect that parents' first choice is going to be our schools. If we don't address this issue, I feel like we're advocating our responsibility to educating our kids to the charter schools or to voucher schools or some of the other options that are out there or brewing out there. So I feel like we need to be the best choice for our families. So on that note, I also received a letter today from the Apopka City Council wanting to partner with me in this exact area. They are concerned about the enormous growth in the next five years in the city relating to school capacity. And they are, they're very concerned and they want to partner with me about it. So I'm planning a summit in my area with city, county, OCPS officials, developers, and other stakeholders from my community to try to get a true grasp on what's coming. Because I kind of, I feel like we just aren't quite grasping, you know, the impact that's coming. I also believe that what we're doing today is just unsustainable for our future. We can't keep rubber-stamping these CEAs and CMAs and not come up with better, a better planning mechanism where we don't keep falling behind on providing permanent capacity enhancements to our school. That's where my concern is. Tonight, I have a CEA in my area that all three schools fail the development impact for new units because they're already overcrowded. And this is not the first one and certainly won't be the last. And I'm not the only one that has them. Other board members have them. But then in the, in the very next section, it says, even though all schools fail capacity and the elementary school pass it, fails at 156% over capacity, there are no plans for any new school, new middle schools or high schools in the 10-year building plan. And the only one is for the elementary school, and that's not until 2026. So this is why I pulled it tonight because I, even the last time these came up on my, on the agenda, I felt the need, but I let it go. And, you know, and now I feel like it's, I just feel like I'm getting a mandate from my community to make a stand and to see if we can come together. What I'd really like to do is, you know, since this is not just a micro issue, this is a macro issue for our community at large. I really would like for us to, I'd like to sit down in a room with my fellow board members and discuss it further and possibly have a work session on it to get a deeper, broad discussion on the issue. I think it's one that we really have to face. And I'm hoping that we can get, that it's one that our community can come together and really, you know, see if we can solve this problem because it's just, it's not going away. So I, so thank you for listening to my comments. And I would like to, when, if you're ready, I would like to approve, to move to approve 1702.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to take a minute to comment. I hate the, I hate the I word, but I don't know another way to explain this. When I first ran for office, it was the overcrowded schools. And the fact that there was no planning between Orange County Public Schools and the, and the county commission. They, they operated totally on their own. They didn't consult with the school district. We didn't have, we, schools weren't part of the comp plan. There was no correlation. And I couldn't understand why in the world county government didn't consider schools as important as roads. We had school, we had road concurrency, which meant that you could stop a development if the roads were overcrowded, but there wasn't school concurrency. And that was the primary platform that I ran on, was the school overcrowding. There are, I think the workshop, and I had actually, Superintendent and I and Woody had talked about this as recently as last week. When I came, when I came over to the site, I realized that some of the things that I thought that we had put in place, one was a charter amendment that I had proposed to stop the county from moving forward unless all of the cities, unless the school district said there was capacity and unless they could override it. But it was a technical and difficult way to override. And it wasn't just the county. It was all the cities all had to abide by this. And in the beginning, there was, there were developments that were stopped. But the environment that we're in today with a lack of housing creates a very different dilemma for the school district. And I believe that an interlocal was entered into, I want to say in like 2009. I was out of office at the time. So there's a lot to this. But I think a work session is an excellent idea. I was, yeah, I literally, there's so much to it that it's going to take us a while to get kind of caught up to why we're doing what we're doing. I wish there were easy answers. We, we had the gentleman from Apopka earlier. I, and he's, you're still here. Good to have you with us. Wish there were easy answers. But I think we, we will come out of that understanding better what we're doing, maybe refining what we're doing. But a big part of this has to do with adequate funding and the authorization to use the funding when we need to and to be able to plan. And so many strings are attached to our ability legislatively to get ahead of the curve. That I think the more informed we are, the better we'll be able to advocate for that. So I'm thrilled that you're bringing this up and wholeheartedly support this discussion and have the utmost confidence between the staff and this group of, of board members that will come out of this in a better place than we are. So thank you. All right. At this point, Member Gould, and then I'll entertain a motion from Member Byrd. Member Gould?
Thank you for bringing this up, Member Byrd. This has, you know, been one of the focal points of my life for six years. You know, some of the challenges, and as we do workshop this, that, that were the hardest pills for me to swallow, were not only some of the, the challenges we have with the state and the timing of things, but it's the timing financially and that thin line of when you can fill a school to the right level to have the right programming available for your students and have it equitable. And you're flipping it over to, you know, overcrowded. In, in, in the West, going West, there is just no way. I mean, we don't want empty schools built either. But it is, it's a tough one. I think there is an adjustment that could be, a tweak that could be made to the formula if we could figure it out and if we could fund it.
Okay. Excellent. So, motion?
I move to approve the items in Agenda Item 1702.
Motion by Member Byrd. Is there a second? Second by Member Gould. The two members who understand probably the pressure here the most because of the districts that you represent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Now, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things from my report. I'm looking at Julie Salvo in the back of the room, too. We'll make sure we queue up that work session. We may have to lump it on top of another work session due to our limited dates, or it may have to be after the end of school when we have some more flexibility in our schedule. Included in her presentation will be some of the constraints we are currently under from the state as well. But the good news is, well, sort of good news and bad news, Bill 77, I believe, 7070, I believe, is going to offer us some flexibility when we have local dollars available not to be under the restrictions of the state. Unfortunately, that is the same bill that gives some voucher money out of the FEFP. So that's, that's the bad news. Good news is we've got some possibilities there for local flexibility around our facilities. So we will continue to watch that. I had a, had a lengthy conversation this morning with the Superintendent's Association. So much good has been packed into 7070 that folks are tempted to support it even though it includes... it includes vouchers out of the, out of the FEFP. And so, you know what my conversation was, but I don't get to make the final decision for our association, but it's a tough decision, and I think it's intentional. Dr. Castor-Denial, you are well-aware of how those bills are put together, to lure folks to support what may eventually, well, well, there's every indication that, that they have the votes with or without, so we shall see. Let me tell you, let's talk about something more positive. So I've got three things on my report. First of all, Florida Standards, as you all know, the Commissioner was commissioned by the governor to look at undoing what they've called Common Core State Standards, they are actually the Florida Standards, that had some adjustments from the Common Core State Standards. And so we put out the word, and I've actually spoke with our CTA President Wendy earlier. We have got to encourage our teachers and instructional staff to weigh in, because it is open to the entire state to weigh in on both the math and the English Language Arts Standards. Standards, do you like this one? Do you not like it? Should we keep it? Should we get rid of it? And so there will certainly be entities in our community that may have had concerns about Common Core even some time back, that will probably be very vocal. We absolutely have to have our teachers, who are the real experts, to weigh in. And so we put out in the news you can use, I don't think we can say it often enough, Wendy's going to put it out, Wendy Dormal's going to put it out for us as well through her resources, but www.florestandardsreview.org. So while we welcome and encourage all of our community to weigh in, parents and business owners and anyone else who may have thoughts around the math and language arts standards, we absolutely have got to encourage our teachers to weigh in on the standards, because they're the ones on the front lines that have to teach those standards. And so every opportunity we get, we're going to encourage our teachers, as long as that survey is open. Number two, high school start times. Reminder that board members have certainly been engaging in conversations in your particular districts and getting feedback regarding high school start times, lots of information shared. I know that many of you have talked with board members outside and inside of the state. Member Castor-Denial certainly gave us lots of research back when we had that original deadline, and I, and I do realize that Member Cobert was in Seattle on personal business, and actually stopped in to get some information from them as well. So we've had several discussions, including some of our one-on-one meetings, that have shared some thoughts and ideas about various models that we might look at. And I, I think I mentioned last time, Student Advisory Council has their own non-scientific survey that they've been gathering, that they want to at least have an opportunity to share with you as well. So on May 7th, we've got our People Progression Work Plan, that is a date Chair and I have looked at, that we can squeeze in a second topic and talk about high school start times. Let me mention, too, for my high school students, we've said to them very clearly, you're not coming to debate the research, the research is clear, you need sleep, and you function better later in the day, so that's not their option. They really wanted to be able to weigh in on some of the pros and cons as they gathered information from their peers. And so the next time they meet, they're due to meet this, later this month, we'll certainly see what they've gathered together. I, I believe when we look at all of the information, we'll be able to bring to you in that work session, a couple of different opportunities for you to consider. And then I think we'll also have a couple of possibilities that we think need to be discounted, either because of cost, or because of manpower, actual, having enough staff. But then I think the board will have an opportunity to discuss how you want to move forward. Do you want to look at some other possibilities? Would you like to put it out in a survey so everyone can weigh in, or continue with your community meetings, and ad hoc opportunities to gather input as well? Bottom line is, it will come down to this board and your decision as elected officials on how you want to move forward. Every bit of advice says, make sure you've got a long enough runway so your community feels engaged, and that they've had ample opportunity to prepare should there be a change. And so at this point, if we're looking at May 7th for our work session, I think we can pretty much count on, not trying to do something next year, but if the board came with some outstanding idea that could be done at the flip of a switch, I would still recommend strong communication out to our community. Last item, teacher survey. So you remember, we, instead of doing our teacher roundtables this year, we had SGS, National Company, actually do telephone surveys of our teachers instead. This is a scientific study. Actually, 1,002 teachers were spoken to by telephone, March 26th through 31st. The full survey will be sent to board members, we're actually going to release it to all of our teachers tomorrow or the next day as well. Had one bit of information, they have to give us a release because it's their data, but the actual survey and the numbers, we will release. But let me tell you a couple of highlights, just for your listening pleasure. So 79 to 80% of our teachers are satisfied with the professional and personal support they receive from OCPS. By the way, I also spoke with Wendy to let her know some of these positive outcomes as well. And, and the purpose of the survey of the polling is both to give us information on what we're doing well, but also give us some direction on what we can work on. This will help us in our next strategic planning workshop on May 2nd. Number two, the top three things OCPS does well included professional learning communities, collaborative planning, and building safety and security. Top three things OCPS can improve on, school-based teacher retention, communication with teachers, and instructional coaching and curricular support. 22% of our teachers said they need more planning time. 71% prefer professional development during the workday and not after hours, but they're split on, do you want it online or in person? I guess some of that may be generational. Most requested topic for PD is on integrating digital teaching tools, as we suspected. 62% felt disciplinary policies were very effective or somewhat effective. 49% believe practices intended to keep students in school have been effective, while 43% did not. So it's an area we've got to have more work on, there, there's more detail there as well. One more highlight, I don't think it'll be surprise to you, I actually thought the number would be higher, but when asked to pick from a list, what would, could OCPS do to keep you here, I thought the number would be higher. 66% said increased pay. Still, that is by large way out in front of anything else, but I just suspected the number would be higher, that surprised me. So consultants may actually be available if we can get them, we're actually negotiating that as well, to come in on May 2nd to talk more about it with the board. Nonetheless, the information will be very helpful, useful to our plans for next year and going forward. Hopefully, this will be released, it'll come to the board first, and then to all of our teachers.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent report. Member Gould, did you press your button to be recognized now? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent, just as an anecdotal support of the digital professional development, I had one of my sit-at-a-restaurant, anybody come talk to me, meetings a couple of weeks ago, and I had a young teacher who's in a school of established teachers, and she's in her second year, but she's the one with the most digital knowledge in the school, and she is feeling pressured to help everyone. So that came out loud and clear, and that may be something that we want to consider as we bring new people in, to prepare them, that they may get asked a lot of questions, especially from some of the more mature mentor teachers. But she's helping a lot of folks and feeling like it's a whole other job, and, and she was, I said, hang in there, there's more professional development coming, but that reinforces one of the things that came out in your survey.
Okay. Member Castor-Denial?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know we still have more to discuss, and it's getting late. I just want to briefly just thank the Superintendent for reaching out and asking the teachers for their opinions, and I'm looking forward to the more detailed report of the survey, and I hope we can continue to do that, maybe on a smaller scale in the future, but I think that's really important to have, make sure that teachers' voices are heard. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on, because we do have a number of issues, still presentations to hear. So Mr. Rodriguez, you're going to give us a reminder about the VAB, and this is going to be the time for school board members to volunteer. Thought I'd slip that in, in case that works.
So I-
I served on it once. I really enjoyed it. It's something everybody should do once.
Sure. The Value Adjustment Board actually is the board that hears the appeals of those cases by property owners that feel dissatisfied, but the good news is, you don't actually hear any of the individual appeals. I used to represent the Property Appraisers Office in litigation, and every one of those cases is either handled by a special magistrate that will hear the valuation cases, usually an appraiser, and they will deal with the individual particulars of those cases. If they're agricultural classification cases, they're usually heard by a lawyer who then dispenses whether or not the property was an agricultural classification or not. At the end of the process, they will bring you, all of them sort of in bulk, and then your job is simply to approve those recommendations with any changes to the process. In smaller counties and communities, you would actually hear the cases one by one, and probably be hearing cases with neighbors, friends, and associates. Here, I can assure you, and I'm looking at Ms. Cobert and Ms. Gould, you probably have never heard any cases live, and it's always presented sort of en masse, but there is a budget, there is a training session that they give you, will give you a good perspective on where some of those dollars are coming from, and maybe some information on the, the amount of dollars that come in as a result of taxes, and how people, when their assessments are assessed too high, have a right to challenge that in that very sensational process. But it's not very glitzy, it's not very, you know, fabulous, but it is an important part, and statutorily, we do need two individuals to serve, so I'm looking for-
And I have served, too, just in the category of have served, just. Member Castor-Denial?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I look to my left, I see that Member Gallo is not here today. So I would like to recommend Member Gallo.
Are we looking for a motion at this point?
No, I, I volunteer, actually.
You'll volunteer?
I will volunteer.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. All right, we have a volunteer. I have one question for you. Does this take a vote at the board, and there's also, yes, a vote at the board?
It will come, it will actually come back at the next board meeting, as an official action item, probably under legal, and I will communicate that information to them, and then in terms of an alternate, really, that can be anyone, you will go through the same training, but I don't think you have to attend the meetings.
Is there anything else on your report, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, and then I also have-
Folks, Mr. Rodriguez is still giving his report?
I just have a-
They're giddy down on this end. I'm sorry, they're celebrating.
We're, we're negotiating.
Okay, okay. Negotiate in the sunshine, keep the mics on. And let's hear from Mr. Rodriguez.
Do I hear Ms. Lopez wanting to volunteer? Is that what I heard?
Oh, they're saying. Put your mic on, put your mic on. It's on the record.
Okay. We'll, we'll put you down, and I'll be there to answer any questions you may have.
She's very stunning, that's good.
My friend is teaching me.
So I, I need to make an announcement. We have two executive sessions that I need to schedule for Thursday, April 18th, and for those board members that are new, this is for executive sessions dealing with litigation, I have to formally announce it at a meeting of the board. It doesn't have to be a school board meeting like this, it could be a workshop, so just bear with me for a moment as I read this into the record. The School Board of Orange County, Florida, will meet in an executive session on Thursday, April 18, 2019, immediately following the Rural Development Workshop scheduled to start at 4:30 PM in the Superintendent's Conference Room, 9th floor in this building, at 445 West Amelia Street. You're going to discuss two, two different lawsuits. The first is Kendall Holly et al. versus the School Board of Orange County, Florida, and the Ninth Judicial Circuit, case number 2016 CA 003602-0. And the second is the School Board of Orange County, Florida, versus Bell South Telecommunications LLC, United States District Court Case Number 6, 618 CB 00710-ORL. The following persons may be in attendance, all school board members, Dr. Barbara Jenkins as Superintendent, myself as General Counsel, Mr. Ralph Martinez Esquiar, and Philip Mooreing Esquiar as Attorneys, Tucker H. Byrd, and Carlos Real Esquiar, both also attorneys and a court reporter. And so I will give you more information on both of those cases over the next week before our executive sessions and one-on-one sessions, but we'll be briefed in full on both of those. Just on, on a final note, as you may have heard, we lost Jared, he became the Clerk of Court, so we are still looking, I think-
He did not become the Clerk of Court.
No, I'm sorry, he's the General Counsel for the Clerk of Court, thank you for clarifying. I'm getting punchy over here as well, but we, we do have a position that was advertised in both the Florida bar and the Orange, well, the Florida bar and our normal traditional methods of advertising. I think that closed either today or tomorrow, so we hope to have that position filled over the next couple of weeks. And if you have any questions on the other research project that I'm working on, feel free to always reach out to me and, and ask.
I have one, one issue, Mr. Rodriguez, if you could look into this. So the position on the CAB with the county that Member Byrd volunteered and agreed to serve on, there's some question with, with regard to whether or not the board voted for that, and whether or not the board as a whole needs to vote for that, because the, the clerk of that function is, has, you know, sent that back questioning whether, she could not find in our minutes where that was approved. So I don't know if that-
Would that not have been done at the, at the reorg meeting back in November? We'll double-check the-
If we can double-check, apparently our minutes don't reflect it, and it might be that it was not, we might not have held a formal vote.
Okay. So we'll look, if not, then we'll put it on the next agenda.
That's what I was going to ask you, if we can't find it, Ms. Gillespie, in her due diligence, probably in part because the letter went to somebody who, Commissioner Clark is no longer there, she probably caused her to look a little more carefully at that, and she did not find it in our minutes. So I'm kind of amazed that she, she looked for, through our minutes, but good for her to be able to access our minutes, that's pretty impressive. Huh? Okay. So if we can figure out when that is, if we can verify, and if not, I think it's just a simple matter of just bringing it back on the next agenda.
Yeah, and it may have been, I, I don't know if that's something that you can appoint as a chair of the board, has to go to a vote, so we'll clarify all that.
Yeah, if we can clarify, I have told her that, you know, I know this board will vouch for Ms. Byrd, but I, we need, we need to document whatever we need to document, so thank you. All right. Next, we have, we have two reports from school board members, and the first on the agenda is Seattle School District High School Start Times, and Ms. Cobert, you're recognized. Member Cobert? Yes, I'm sorry, did, did I miss something? What, Mr. Rodriguez? You okay?
Yeah. Of importance, too, was-
Oh, and Dr. Jenkins.
I had another item to discuss with the board, and that is the town of Eatonville, and I don't see Mayor Cole here, so I'm a little surprised, I thought he was going to be here. There, our contract with them expired at the end of March. This was another six-month extension, and actually is now the Ninth Amendment, doesn't mean nine extensions, but we've had nine different amendments to this agreement, which started back in 2010, shortly after I started here, and preceding that had been a number of years of negotiations between us and the town of Eatonville. With the expiration of that contract, that means that we now can proceed with entering into a new agreement with the town and moving forward. However, in an emergency hearing that was scheduled by the town, and in a 3-2 vote, it was very split for that community, they, the board, the town council has asked for another three-month extension. In the past, I have vouched that, you know, we're closer, I feel like we're, using football analogies, we were at one point, I think, first and goal inside the 10. I feel in the last six months, really, we've only just regressed, and I do not see any progress whatsoever by Up Development, who is the developer. There were misrepresentations made, whether it was by them or others in attendance that were reported back to me, it is hearsay, but at the same time, there were false statements about us not providing information, which were not true. Laura Kelly gave them information back in January of 2018, almost a year and a half, or year and change. They've not done any due diligence when it comes to environmental issues, and they continue to claim that there are environmental issues out there. But where we are now is, they're asking for another three months, they provided no additional compensation or consideration, and in the absence of any direction from this board, I'm going to assume that it will lapse. If the board wants me to pursue this, or wants to delegate a member to pursue an extension, we can certainly do that, and we would have to bring it back at the next board meeting. But truth be told, I think this is a project that needs to be revamped. I've had some conversations with the Chair over this, and she may want to chime in, but at, but at the end of the day, the way the current model is with the current developer just doesn't seem to go forward, and Mayor Cole, if he were here, had shared with me that share with the board, he was one of the two on the losing side on the- one of the two on the losing side on the 3-2 vote, but that he has lost all faith and confidence as well in this project with this particular developer. I think that's probably been evident for some time, but he's kept it private. And at this last session, it became apparent that their goal is simply to amass maybe some additional investors and hope in three more months that they have enough money to really close on the deal. So I need some direction as to whether you want it back. If the board does not, then I will communicate that to the board, to the town council. If you do, then we'll start working on the paperwork to extend.
Thank you. Yeah, let me chime in because we have had several conversations about this. And I think one of the most important things that the town of Eatonville can do, and Mr. Rodriguez and I have discussed it, is to identify the land uses that they feel are appropriate on that property. Until you do that, it's going to be very, very difficult to get anybody interested in the property, and you're never going to get as much money because of the lack of certainty. So there is a couple of options. I know that, I know from my eight years of working with Eatonville, I understand their predicament. They have a very tight budget. It's extremely difficult to run a city of that size. And so was hoping to, and Mayor Cole and I have had a great relationship over the last eight, nine years now, and was hoping that there might be an opportunity to offer him some support. I think Orange County would be willing to do that based on some conversations I've had with the mayor and his county administrator. And so I think that would be an opportunity. Fact of the matter is, we actually have some staff of our own that might be able to assist with that planning process of working with the city. But I think if the city can identify a land use plan, we can move this forward much better. And then, secondly, I do want to be abundantly clear that in letting this interlocal lapse, it is not for lack of support of working with Eatonville. That would not, that's not my goal. I don't think that's anybody's goal, and I would just want it just publicly on the record that, that we want to continue to work with Eatonville, but we want to be, we want a plan that has a likelihood of success. And that means we need Eatonville to be in the driver's seat, deciding what they want for that property first and foremost. And once they're in that driver's seat, I think we can move this project along. With that, Member Castor Dennel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as a teacher at Domrick, I was fortunate enough to teach some of my favorite students from Eatonville. And I've represented the city of Eatonville as a legislator, and I've worked with the former mayor, Bruce Mount, and the current mayor, Eddie Cole, and the community. And I hold a special place in my heart for Eatonville. And I understand the great need to develop a reliable tax base for the city, but I also know O C P S has been working on the Hungerford School property for 10 years. And the current contract with the developer has had three extensions, which have not been successful. So I am going to support the mayor's recommendation and our legal department's recommendation to not extend the contract again.
Okay. Do we, we don't need a motion at this time because it's not in front of us? I wasn't quite sure how we were handling that, Woody, so...
Because it really, the contract has just lapsed.
Okay.
So at this point, and it's not an agenda item?
Neither the superintendent, me, or any other board member has asked to have this on the board's agenda.
Correct. So in the absence of request to put it on the next board agenda, I will just communicate that. And that means you didn't take any official action, but by not taking action, you've taken action.
Right. Okay, now, anything further before I, okay, Member Cobert, you want to share with us your experience and what you learned? And may I also mention that our staff also, I believe, actually went out to Seattle and to meet, and I don't know if it's specifically for that, but the staff is, I think, really, really engaged in this process, and I was very excited to hear some of what they found in terms of what's, what worked well and some of the challenges. And I think hearing from you, from your perspective, will help enlighten the board as well.
Thank you. So as we all have been learning lately, that we start with the why. And the why that I wanted to have this discussion tonight is that we have been talking about this issue. And in keeping in mind that we are talking about the possibility of moving back high school start times, and it's been a very complex issue that both this board and the previous board have discussed at length. And it comes down to what's best for kids. So all of us, I know, have been gathering information and research, and I'm going to keep this brief because of the hour. But I decided that if we were going to look at this, we're going to make a researched-based decision. So I wanted to look at other counties around the state that have done this or considered this. I've talked to Pinellas, Hillsborough, Brevard, Volusia, Osceola, and they've executed it in different forms. But the whole conversation nationally started in Seattle, Washington. That's ground zero because the University of Washington is the one that did the study on students, the teen brain, and how it functions differently. So that research, references to that research are all in your packet. I'm not going to read it to you. But it was very interesting. I traveled out there on spring break because I was visiting my children. And while I was out there, made an appointment to talk with the deputy superintendent, the operations people and transportation people, and they were very generous with their information. I wanted to know what they did right and well, also what were their speed bumps, what were their roadblocks, how did they communicate, what has been the result? And most of that is in your packet, including references to the research, references to the research based on certain decisions that they made. So for example, many counties have moved elementary school to an earlier start time, but there's also research that has been done on that, and that information is in there as well. There are financial considerations, obviously. There are operational considerations. So for example, the city of Seattle needed to put in additional field lights to have athletic practices and events, things like that. Remember that they're in the, more to the north, so we're not going to have as much of that. But operational considerations are important. Where might you need to add extended childcare or supervised homework or tuition for middle schoolers, things like that? A lot of that, again, a lot of those, that information is in here. One of the most vital things that I learned is that this has to be a community conversation. And so as we move forward in looking at these options, it is vital that all of us go out and have these conversations with our community as to why we would even consider this. If we make a decision, why we are making that decision, what benefit will it be for students, and what have we done to mitigate any inconveniences for parents, our 25,000 employees, et cetera, as well as being really smart stewards of the taxpayer money. So in Seattle, there are things that they would have done differently. And again, I'm not going to read it to you, but it's in here. And I'm really looking forward to our work session on May 7th so that we can continue the conversation amongst each other. And if you have additional questions at that time, after you read through this information, I'd be happy to go into detail then.
Great. Very good, very good. And, Member Gordon?
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so very much. I had an opportunity to attend the National School Board Association Conference, which took place in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. The conference was definitely for public education leaders, and it's one of the finest conferences that I've ever attended. I do have the information here. We usually leave it in the room next to Nancy's office in our boardroom. That will be in there. But I did share with Dr. Jenkins several issues that did come up that would be important to this board, and I think she's sharing it with her staff as well. But one that touched me the most was I had an opportunity to be with the Broward County Chair at that particular time of the incident that happened in Broward County. I think we need to listen a little bit more to the people who actually got, was in the fight. I'm asking Dr. Jenkins in this board, I think our conversation needs to be not hearing things and bringing in things, but actually meeting and talking with people that actually went through it. And to hear Nora, as the Chair of the Broward County School Board, go through what they went through, the what went right, what went wrong, what do we do, when and how, we need to hear that conversation. I'm 52 years of teaching, and not one time did I hear any of the things that they talked about at this conference, which was just mind-boggling, all of our little wonderful training that we do. I briefly, when Chief Holmes came to me to share an item that was on the agenda, I said, "Well, wait a minute, are you familiar with what has been taking place in several of the conferences?" They're actually talking with the survivors. They are not only just talking with the survivors, they are talking with the parents that were affected and what procedures were followed. And we're not following them, I'm being honest to that effect. Because if we're not talking about it, and I highly recommend that we talk a little bit more with Brevard, with Broward, Broward County as to what the preparation before, the preparation doing, and the preparation after. We don't have that down pat. And I'm in a school every day. We are not ready. I'm being honest with you. We think we're getting ready physically, we think that we're getting ready by preparation, but I think when Michelle Gay, a former mother and a former teacher and a co-founder of the Safe and Sound Schools, which is now called a Sandy Hook Initiative, I think this is what we need to bring to our team. Until, we didn't bring, we did not bring her, we brought the thing that you and I suggested, but you didn't bring, you did not, you did not bring Michelle.
No, no, no.
You weren't there, you weren't there. You and I brought back recommendations from F S B A that we took to the executive director to tell her what we heard and saw. And F S B A brought it, but that's not what I'm talking about. That's what I'm saying, stop doing. That's what I'm saying, stop doing. The action of what took place that day, there were almost 10,000 of us sitting there, we were just dumbfounded, basically what Michelle Gay had to tell us. And she shared that she is doing this organization with, let me just put the name out there for those that may be listening, parents, and want to know more, because we are not giving parents everything that they need to know. We're not even working hand in hand, giving the business, the community, what they need to know. She gave us the name of her coworker, Elizabeth Parker. Elizabeth Parker and Michelle Gay. And out of all of the safety workshops that I attended in Philadelphia, the school safety one on, and I thought I knew everything about it because we were able to get the funds and everything, and I thought we were well-prepared. But when she told us that preparation was the key, and recovery was a key, and response was a key, I immediately went to my principal and to others that I know, and I shared. And I also shared with Dr. Jenkins and the chief, you think you know. And if I gave you some of the things, she asked us not to even take pictures. She said, "Please do not." But people were taking it because they were just dumbfounded and not letting, everybody had the alert to say that this was happening, but nobody knew where to go. The place that they thought that they had practiced and prepared, it wasn't ready, you know?
Member, if I can interrupt for a second, because I'm listening to what you're saying, and I'm mindful of the fact that the public is listening as well, and I'm not sure if the things that you're saying are accurate or not.
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, here's not, probably this is not the time to...
You were not there. Well, you can't be the judge of that, Madam Chair.
Member, you do this to me when I'm speaking?
No.
Right, I'm saying right now, this is a safety issue.
I think that is so rude. We are talking about the safety...
Dr. Jenkins, are you comfortable with this conversation?
Dr. Jenkins, it has nothing to do with this. I've already shared this with her.
Okay.
You should have been there. You should have been there as a chair. If you, if you don't know what it's like, you went through pause, but you weren't at pause. I'm three minutes away from pause, okay? You were not there. You need to listen to people that have been there. And all I'm saying to you is that we need to bring in those that work with the Safe and Sound Schools, the Sandy Hook Initiative, as well as the Broward County, and even the Columbine, because nobody is listening. I attend these workshops, Madam Chair, where these people actually speak, and it's nothing that we are being trained in. I know what we are being trained in, okay? You don't. You don't.
Yes, I do.
Well, it wasn't fair for you to cut me off, because I've listened to you all night long, from 4:30 to now, and I'm going to have my say, because this is where you learn. And that's why they called it a public education leader. And if you can't take the heat and you can't understand what's happening and you want to hide it from the public, you can't. You better listen to the people that have been through it. Because if you're not, you're not going to get there. So, Madam Chair, that ends my report. I'm so sorry you interrupted me and disrespected me, and I appreciate it, but I pass this information on to Dr. Jenkins. And if you don't learn the preparation, and if you don't learn the response, and you're not clear, Madam Chair, you will not be able to lead this board successfully.
Thank you. A closed session, executive session over a very important safety issue. You interrupted me constantly, and you criticized me for bringing to light a problem in the organization. So, we did that in a way that we wanted to make sure that we were not exposing any weaknesses. I want to make sure that as we move forward, that when we have these conversations...
You have a few...
Okay. Based on what you just said, we aren't doing anything right, we're doing everything wrong. I don't think that's, I think having experts that have been through this from Broward County is a great idea. I think that we all need to observe the same rules when we deal with each other. And I would expect in the future that you respect me when I'm talking, and I will, and I will respect you next time.
You disrespected me, you owe me an apology.
I'll give you one as soon as I get one. Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to apologize to you when you interrupted me.
Member Gordon, are you suggesting you did not interrupt me?
I did not. I was in the middle of giving my speech, and it got hot for you.
No, it did not get hot. It concerns me.
Because I talked about response, preparation, and recovery. If you could explain to us what response and preparation and recovery is, and I spent those several days up there learning, then you tell it. I told Dr. Jenkins about it.
I'm glad you did.
And I shared it with the chief. Parents and the public needs to know. And it's not given out any secrets.
Okay. Member Gordon, I think if somebody else had said what you said, you would be chastising them right now.
No, we would not.
But I think it is important for us to take a careful look. Member, you're interrupting me. Member Gordon, you're interrupting me. Member Gordon, you're interrupting me.
You're not going to win, because I know my, I know...
You're right. You're right, I'm not going to win.
Okay, you're not going to...
I'm not going to win a debate with you.
So don't try to be debating. You're not going to win, for whatever reason you're cutting me off as disrespectful as a chair. You just talk all the time as a chair. It's enough now. Let others get the word in. Now, you had it from 4:30, and I picked it up from 8:45. So let me get my little five minutes in or whatever. You just cut right on. That's why you have the time.
Only because we're on a safety subject, and I wanted some direction from the superintendent.
I know about safety better than you do. You might have been the mayor of the city, but, of the county, but I was sitting here in this chair, when you didn't even know what was going on, and you're going to feel it. You're going to feel it. So you need to listen and learn. I can't sit in the mayor's chair, but you haven't sat where I'm sitting.
Dr. Jenkins? Regarding the information that's been shared with you, what are the next steps that we need to take? Based on the information that you're aware of, that our teachers are not prepared and able to respond, what are the next steps this board needs to take to make sure that they are?
Don't blow it out of proportion.
No, I want to know, based...
She was given a...
What steps does this board need to take, based on the information that you've been provided, that the rest of the board doesn't have at this point?
Madam Chair, for the information brought back from that conference, we're actually asking our chief, Brian Holmes, and his safety team to take a look at that and see where we might have some additional training that could be a possibility. We'll tell you, in our survey to teachers, there are a couple of questions around safety as well that give us some instruction. But I want the general public to be certainly confident that we are diligent about every recommendation that comes to us. And our safe officer is Chief Brian Holmes, who will be reviewing all of that information.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Anything else to come for the board? Member Gould?
So I also went to...
So I also went to a National School Board Association meeting, and I did different tracks from Member Gordon. And there's a couple of things that I think we need to put on our radar. One is the 2020 census and the role that the Census Bureau and the communities are asking schools to take in helping bring awareness to the census. Because if all of our families and all of the residents of our community are not counted, it hurts our financial support, both on the state and federal level. So getting that word out will be important, and I think that's something that the board should be aware of. The other thing is, National School Board Association has been part of a very large project looking at skills gaps. And I won't go over it all tonight, but I, I did want to share a couple of things that came out of this report, because they worked with most of the major industries from across the country, including construction, finance, computer science, manufacturing, technology, hospitality, and healthcare. And it was pretty comprehensive, and the president of SHRM came and presented some of that, and then there were a couple of sessions following that as well. Well, one of the things that's very interesting is, as we know, millennials are not having babies at the same rate, so birth rates are going down, gaps in employment are going up. And right now, we're going to graduate 3.6 million high schoolers, and there's 7.3 million job openings.
Wow, that is.
That's, and that gap is growing. And, well, and that leads to my next thing. So the, the other thing that really came out of that is the skill base. And of course, vocational skills and all of that were counted, but there were five areas of skills that they have identified that are absolutely important for kids to have by the time they graduate high school. And that is critical thinking, decision-making, teamwork, customer focus, adaptability and trainability, and dependability and reliability. So, and, and that's not a course. That is, these are ways of life that we have to start teaching from birth through the time they graduate. So I will share these reports with everyone. I'll do, as Ms. Gordon indicated, I have the physical report, I'll put it in the school board room, and then I have some copies that I'll have the staff send out. But this is where our local conversations are, this is where our statewide conversations are, and this is certainly the national conversation. And we've done a lot, but we have a long way to go.
Well, they can learn all those skills in Boy Scouts.
That's right. They can. They can learn all those skills in Boy Scouts.
Member Kestrel Dental?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to address the Boy Scouts.
Yeah.
I believe you are here to get your citizenship and the community merit badge. Did you know that? One of the things that you can do is to attend a meeting of your city, town, county, or school board. So you guys picked one of the longest meetings we've had, and you've stayed so far. But then the second part of your merit badge requirement is to choose one of the issues discussed at the meeting where a difference of opinions was expressed, and then explain to your counselor why you agree with one opinion more than you do another one. And I would love to hear your opinions as well. So if you would like to share that via email, I would love to get your, your perspectives on some of these important issues. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kestrel Dental. And Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to thank Karen to bring it up with the charter school situation, because if our public schools needs to be transparent and accountable, the charter school needs to do the same thing. So I feel very comfortable with that contribution. Thank you so much. With the start times, in my district, for example, Timber Creek High School are doing grassroots survey with the students. I feel, I feel that this is very cool, because the students need to, to feel that they have a voice. And we are trying to have these conversations about starting times, and sometimes the constituents are kind of afraid because they are thinking about switching instead of making all their changes by having 10 minutes, you know, the options that we are having conversations before. So this is a great opportunity for our students to, to just spread out their voices and express their opinion through that grassroots survey. So I think that we have to educate our constituents and our parents, because it's not switching, could be an option, but I, I don't think that we're thinking about switching. We're thinking about just adding minutes and looking for safety, the daylight, and all of that aspect that are included in, in changing the times. I also appreciate the fact of that Melissa Bird contribute with the overcrowding on topic, because when I was looking at the goal and constituents fighting and speaking up for their children, I was thinking about Lake Dona constituents. They are very vocal. We are facing the same situation, and I really appreciate that. I, I love when I have emails in reference to overcrowding, because it's something that we need to improve and we need to learn. So I really appreciate your contribution. Thank you so much.
We need to end this on a positive. Thank you. And Member, Member Gordon.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I do want to reclaim some of my time at the next meeting, because it was a great workshop. I did not get to share all of the good things that I did learn. I did bring back things and information for the staff as it related to student-based interventions, and how it enhanced positive outcome for students when the odds are suggested otherwise against our students. One of the biggest things, there was equity, and I will put this, it should be in, some of it is in the board docs, but I don't think Mrs. McGill was able, because of the time schedule, was able to get everything in there. It's very important that we, as board members, we pay a lot of money to go to these conferences. And if we're going to just talk about it for just a second or two at the board table, then it's not good enough. We used to be where we could come back and share and work sessions and, and talk sessions and talk about it. But one person that was very important that this board could learn from is Dr. Bryant T. Mark Sr. And he conducts research and professional development in the area of diversity and implicit bias, implicit bias. He also deals with black male psychology and development, the academic achievement of minority students, innovation in STEMs in education, and person, personal passion for productivity. It was a very productive workshop, every single one of them, and I gleaned quite a bit from every one. But the one on implicit bias is something we can learn a little bit about.
Thank you, Member Gordon. Let me clarify one thing, because I don't start the timer for these reports. I don't know how that's worked in the past. But I feel like if a board member's been to a conference and/or has done some research, and they're presenting something, that we shouldn't stick with a five-minute timer. So in terms of reserving time, I have all the time in the world to hear about the, what you learned, and I think it's very important.
I, you have a question.
Yeah. The only concern I have was just me understanding the protocol of state, safety issues and understanding when are they okay to talk about. I think that we've got, we've put so much on our plate with changes that we're trying to implement, but I think it is important that there is enough time, when you come back from conferences, that we all, when we all don't get to go, or we all don't go to the same conferences, that we have a more open forum. So perhaps we can look at using workshop time moving forward to have broader discussions on these types of issues, because they are important. And my interruption of you was not intended to be an interruption, it was just trying to get clarification if we were within the bounds that we were supposed to be talking. So with that, I apologize for interrupting you. We don't have a time limit on how long board members can speak when they're presenting. If the board at some point feels like we need to, we can adopt that. At this point, my understanding is it's five minutes for an item that's on the agenda. And with that, we have Member Cobert, and you may be closing us out.
I want to end this on a high note. And this is a compliment to our operations and purchasing department. You, all of you have a little, little red notebook in front of you, and these were sent by FSBA because Orange County won an award for saving the most money by using ByBoard, which is a, a national purchasing co-op. And Orange County has, I guess we purchased some bleachers and saved about 18%, something along those lines. But they were very proud of us for how frugal we are in finding every nickel and dime that we can save for the taxpayers, and they sent you each a little red notebook in honor of that. And so I just want to say thank you to Mr. Pacheco and your team for, for being good stewards of our taxpayer dollars.
All right. Any further business to come before the board? With that, our meeting is now adjourned. And to our Boy Scouts, it is the latest meeting that we've had in, since the new board members have been here. Sorry about that, but thank you for bearing with us.